City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burrus. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, May 19th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. And I have one. This is National Public Works Week, May 18th through 24th, 2014. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services provided have far-reaching effects on our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of the public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, fleet maintenance, public buildings, solid waste, and recycling collection. And whereas the health, safety, and quality of life of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas quality infrastructure, services, and facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and maintenance could not be provided without the dedicated efforts and skills of public works employees. And whereas the motivation for efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works and related departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas it is in the interest of the public for citizens and civic leaders to understand the role that public work services plays in protecting the environment, improving the public health and safety, contributing to economic vitality, and enhancing the quality of life in Evanston. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim May 18th through 24th, 2014, as National Public Works Week and commend all city employees for delivering quality public service. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of public works employees in providing responsive and effective government for Evanston. Would Suzette Robinson please come forward and accept this and our thanks for great snow shopping?
Oh, keep going, what the heck? We got all night. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bonnie.
How's folks?
I don't know. You're going to do it too.
Thank you.
Big crowd.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Call it over here today.
Want to get a hug?
Thank you.
So, get a hug for today.
I don't know, we'll see.
Picture.
Everybody cram in.
Nobody's going to go past you.
Well.
Everybody's cool.
I went through a rack.
Welcome, Jim.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. We're going to try to do this shot here.
Everybody say, "No more snow."
No more snow.
No more snow.
All right, I tried to just stay with the camera.
Did it work?
I think it went.
That was a test one.
We'll do the next one here. Just want to make sure I get everybody. Back out for one.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you all very much. That concludes the Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. A number of additional items. Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here, I think, wants to talk a little bit more about snow. And then we're not going to talk about it anymore after tonight.
Yes.
For at least three more months.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Deputy Clerk, and City Manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And this is our second time to be here where we had a major snow event where we wanted to show appreciation to all the many departments, division, and city personnel that involved in snow removal. So I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory on what happened during the snow season. And Evanston did break the record. And we got 90.9 inches of snow and the previous record was 89 inches. And then that's just a summary of kind of where we are in terms of the budget, what we spent so far in 2014. So we're just about $600,000 over where we should be. And we still have late November and the month of December to add to the 2014 totals there. So quickly, I want to talk about the roles that all of the various departments and divisions play in the snow removal operation. From the Health Department, we have the property inspectors that go out and address sidewalk snow removal issues, as well as landlords that are not maintaining their property administrative services. We really couldn't move without them because we really need their help in terms of all the materials. It implies that we need, in order to manage our snow operations. And the public works administration and engineering, those folks also answer operational calls. And in engineering, also supported our towing operation this year and last year as well. The Citizen Engagement Group, the emails, alerts, updating the TV and the radio. You know, it's just, it's a cooperative teamwork between a variety of divisions and police and 3-1-1. 3-1-1 has been a tremendous help in managing the whole customer service requests for snow. Each year, we get better and better at, since 3-1-1 has been in place. It helps us, it gives the direct access to the residents. And it happens pretty immediately now that all of the supervisors and the division heads actually have access on their iPad, so they really see the requests as they come in. So before, we would have to wait until either the supervisor comes in. And sometimes a snow emergency is over before we get the request. Now they get the request right away and they can address them. So we appreciate having that service and being able to provide the response. So I want to move on to talk a little bit about administrative services and police. And I don't know if anybody is here representing those divisions at all. Maybe not. But for administrative services, the parking enforcement and the police, they do towing and traffic control in order for us to clear the snow during snow emergencies and snow route parking ban. So I just want to thank those two sections. The next section I want to talk to, and I believe there are people from Parks. In the Parks section, they're responsible for the recreation center and the civic center snow removal here in this building. And they also are responsible for clearing the trails and for ice rink maintenance. So if there is anybody here from Parks, representing Parks, can you come up? And... That's all right. It's the supervisor. He's holding down the fort for the rest of the group. So what the Mayor has, a "thank you" card. And I'm going to read it, if that's okay, Mayor. And it says, "Thank you. We join Evanston residents and businesses in expressing our thanks, admiration, and applause for your incredibly hard work and dedication during our snowiest season on record. You are terrific." So says Mayor Elizabeth Tisdall. And the 79th City Council. Can't forget you guys. Okay, so if whoever wants to give the appreciation card, she's going to hand the card to you? No, 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 it's all the same, so it's just... So moving on to sanitation. If there are people from sanitation, if you can start coming up as I explain to you what your section... So Residential Recycling Business District and Park Collections, and they also assist with refuse plow truck when accumulation exceeds six inches. So are there people here from sanitation?
All right. Did you get your cards? Thank you. So you go get a card from one or the other. Okay.
Now we have Fleet Services, and I believe there are lots of people from Fleet, if you guys could come up. Fleet did a phenomenal job. They kept all 22 large plows, the six loaders, one greater, and 32 smaller plows operational all season. And they kept our brine maker and our salt melter operational. So we really appreciate the work that they have done. So if you guys could just go, any council member, they'll give you your appreciation card. So just go all the way around, just pick the card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the "thank you." They've gotten other stuff already.
And next would be the Forestry section. I believe there are people here from Forestry as well. Forestry are primary snow removers. We rely heavily and have on the Forestry Division as primary snow removal. So they work hand-in-hand with Streets. They also assist with pothole patching. And they had the unexpected pleasure of also having to deal with the emergency tree removal this winter as well. So the frigid temperatures impacted everyone. And I guess I'm doing this now, so... There you go. Thank you very much. So next, we have Utilities. I don't know if anybody's here from Utilities Division. But they are also primary snow removers, much like Forestry. And then they have the added responsibilities of maintaining additional water main breaks. And then they also are responsible for police and fire parking lot snow removal. The Business District, which is represented here, they are responsible for the bridges and the by-dock sidewalk snow removal. They take care of the city parking lots and also assist with pothole patching. So thank you very much. You're welcome. And then, last but certainly not least, we have the Streets Division, which they're the primary snow removals. They're responsible for snow melting and the salt brine making, the anti-icing operations. They're the heavy equipment, snow removal operations, as well as pothole patching. And I like to say that they tend to be the last ones that even after everybody's forgotten about snow, when the snow is still there, they're responsible for all of the residuals. So thank you very much. Take one and pass it back. Oh, they have cards. They said, "Come up." They want you guys to come. You guys come up and get them. Here, give me that back. Just give me that back. Just go get them from there. She told me not to do that. Go out there and get one from your mayor. So right now, I also want to take a moment to show a special appreciation. And we didn't really get to do this because he decided to go to a snow removal conference during our last appreciation. Heaven forbid to prepare for this next season. But last but not least, I want to personally thank Mr. Mayworm, Jim Mayworm, our Superintendent of Trees and Sanitation. Phenomenal job. Phenomenal job. You know, finally, I think it's been a long time since I've been able to actually close my eyes during a snow removal operation. And he actually allows me to do that so that, because I can rest assured knowing that he has, the City of Evanston is in good hands. So he does a phenomenal job. So thank you very much, Jim. And so, last but not least, the Evanston residents. We want to thank you for your patience, thank you for your cooperation, and thank you for all the appreciation. We received a ton of nice notes for the job that these guys have all done. So I really appreciate them taking the time to do that. So thank you very much.
Director Robinson, aren't you forgetting? You get one of these.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we have a couple of other presentations from Public Works. As you know, our Fleet Services Division was recognized this year by Governing Magazine in an honorable mention in their annual ranking of the 100 best public fleets in America. And so we would like to have an opportunity to recognize our Fleet Services Division. Director Robinson, do you have a few words?
Yes, I do. Again, this seems like Public Works Night. But I will tell you that I am very fortunate, in addition to Jim, to having a very good, solid division heads, and Lonnie is one of them, that probably, besides Paul, has the, next-to-the-longest tenure with the City of Evanston. And so they submitted an application to apply for one of the best fleets in North America. And so the criteria for excellence was listed there. I'm just going to read a few in terms of accountability. The use of technology, the performance recognition, doing it right the first time, quick and efficient turnaround. Lonnie does a great job of communicating the status. He sends a daily status out to all of the departments and those that are responsible for fleets within their respective departments and divisions, and lets them know what the status is. And I think that this is the first time that we've had this in a long time, where everything is computerized, everybody knows the status of everything. So the communication has improved dramatically, and they do a really good job of fixing it once. So what this means for Evanston, five Illinois-based fleet operations make the top 100 list. Unfortunately, we weren't one of them. But we did make the list of one of the 20 that were listed as honorable mention above the 100. So what that means is that Evanston ranks somewhere between 100 and 120 out of 38,000 public fleets in North America. So that's pretty huge. And so I think Lonnie and I share as a goal for next year that we're going to make the list of top 100, because we don't like the honorable mention category. I mean, it's nice to be there, but we would really like to be on the list. And last but not least, I just want to thank you Fleet Services staff for your outstanding work. So there they are.
But as Suzette said, this is kind of Public Works Night. So now let's move on to another Public Works Division, and that's our Forestry Division. Two issues there. One, announcement regarding our Tree City USA status and our plan for I Love Evanston Trees 2 this spring and summer.
Okay, that's not to begin. No, that's okay, I got, I'm there now. So again, I'm pleased to announce that the City of Evanston did receive the Tree City USA Award again. This is our 30th consecutive year winning that award. And we also, our 13th year, receiving the Growth Award. So if you haven't noticed, the signs are already up. And I will tell you that because the 30 years, we get a different color banner so it doesn't blend into the background, that's the first thing that I noticed. So I remembered those numbers. And Paul was so impressed with me, you know, having just taken over for it. She's like, "How do you know that?" Because this sign is prominently displayed at all the entrances and exits to Evanston so that people can know that. And that 30 years really does stand out. So congratulations for that, Paul. And so these are some of the things that they accomplished, the Forestry Division, in receiving that award. So from the trimming over 1,000 trees, the tree removals, planting new trees, and then the iHeart Tree Campaign also played a role in how they got the 30th Award. And then the Growth Award involves some of the outside work that they do and the training that they do for others. The Tree Summit, they hosted an eight-week training course for the Evanston Treekeepers. And then the Green Living Festival, which they participate in every year. So only 10 other communities in Illinois have a longer consecutive streak than Evanston. Illinois is number three with the, in the United States, for the number of Tree City USA communities. And Evanston is one of 310 communities nationwide to receive the award for 30 years or more. So I'm really proud of the work that they've done. And so we also are announcing the kickoff for iHeart Evanston Tree 2. We received over $20,000 in donations last year. And so our goal is to increase that to $25,000 for 2014. You can contact 3-1-1 or Forestry for any additional questions. And again, I'm very proud of the work that the Evanston Forestry staff and crews have done to make this city... I mean, I think we are recognized for the quality of life that the trees provide for this community. And more importantly, Paul is a tough cookie when it comes to trying to remove, relocate in lieu of construction. He just doesn't give developers a hard time. He gives staff a hard time, too, even though it's a city project. So whenever there's somebody that says that, you know, he is, he definitely, the trees come first. I mean, even to the point of, it took him, and he does everything within season. He doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how inconvenient you are by the bird droppings that continue to fall on your car. If it's not time to trim the trees, he's not going to trim it. So, and I think for a longest time, there was, there's just one particular tree that
As you know, we've been working on a bike study. We are coming to the conclusion of that process, but we are reaching out to the community
Paul and I, now I moved over to the Civic Center, he probably arranged so I could do that, so I could stop complaining about the tree that was dropping all this stuff on
one additional time to get some additional feedback.
my car. And I was like, "Can you just trim it back just a little bit?
So we thought it would be appropriate this evening to provide an update as to where we're
It's not time, it's not time, it's not time." So, and then I move, and now he trimmed the tree.
at and the survey that's out and final steps of this process.
Go figure, what does that mean, Paul? So, but anyway, thank you very much, Paul.
Suzette?
Thank you again. I mean, you're phenomenal. So I'm going to let Paul, would like to say a few words. So we're given a status update, and I just wanted to just do a review of what the purpose So, here you go, Paul DeAgostino. of the 2014 update was.
Thank you, Suzette.
We really wanted to establish a complete and comfortable biking network.
Paul DeAgostino, Assistant Director of Public Works for Parks and Forestry.
And this time, the update really put a special focus on the top 10 employers and those,
I had some prepared remarks, but Suzette mostly covered what I wanted to say. But I am very excited about getting this 30-year award.
the employee movement to and from those employers.
And I do have quite a nice piece to give you, Mayor, for our 30th year.
And we also looked at the recreation and student bicyclists, where they were going
So that's what I'd like to do.
Thank you very much.
and the paths that they were taking to get there. So, and that group represents about 60% of the bicyclists in Evanston. So bike survey number one in the census data, as a result of the census data, we know that Evanston residents that are biking, that has increased 46% since 2000. And I think that that number is evident by the number of bikes that you see parked all around town. It just seems to have been a huge increase in the number of bikers. So some of the key points that we found out as a result of the bike survey number one, we had over 500 people respond to that survey. It was online. We also did, we attended Big Bike Night, we attended Bike the Ridge, where we did iPad surveys. We also went to coffee shops. We went to Starbucks and kind of where people were in a more relaxed environment and willing to take a survey. And we will do that again for Bike Survey 2. So 64% of those people identified themselves as the recreation casual bicyclists. Some of the challenges that they identified, number one and two, were the lack of bike lanes and unsafe bike lanes. 80% were concerned about motorists not sharing the road with bicyclists. 72 were concerned about the negative interactions between motorists and bicyclists. 61% were concerned about bicyclists not following traffic laws. And 75% were concerned about bicyclists riding on sidewalks. So what we did was, when we looked at developing the questions and where we needed further input in the development for survey number two, we used that date, the data that I just described to you from survey one, and we developed survey two to try to address the following. The development of more comfortable corridors to address that 60% recreation student rider. We looked at the opportunity to expand bike parking facilities and locations, because that was one of the other issues that was raised. And then, last but not least, we wanted to develop harmony and safety between the various modes. And so we explored different ways that we can do that. One involved education. The other one involved the expanding the bike network. And the last was to focus on restrictions. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the restrictions piece, because that seems to have caused a little bit of stress. And so those restrictions were really based on some high-stress corridors. And so I wanted to provide everybody with an opportunity of what made those corridors high stress. So, and what we did, and what the survey does, it only seeks input on those corridors that have characteristics that are similar to Ridge. So I've identified the various criteria and how that corridor meets those criteria, from whether there were a bus route, the truck route, high traffic counts, high bicycle accidents, commuter corridor, and narrow width. And one of the things that was really interesting in the public meeting in particular, there were common...
As you know, we've been working on a bike study. I'm, Madam Mayor, members of the council, one final report from our Public Works Department. As you know, we've been working on a bike study. We are coming to the conclusion of that process, but we are reaching out to the community one additional time to get some additional feedback, so we thought it would be appropriate this evening to provide an update as to where we're at and the survey that's out and final steps of this process. Suzette?
Thank you again. So, so we're given a status update, and I just wanted to just do a review of what the purpose of the 2014 update was. We really wanted to establish a complete and comfortable biking network, and this time, the update really put a special focus on the top 10 employers and those, the employee movement to and from those employers, and we also looked at the recreation and student bicyclists, where they were going and the paths that they were taking to get there. So, and that group represents about 60% of the bicyclists in Evanston. So, bike survey number one in the census data, as a result of the census data, we know that Evanston residents that are biking, that has increased 46% since 2000. And I think that that number is evident by the number of bikes that you see parked all around town. It just seems to have been a huge increase in the number of bikers. So, some of the key points that we found out as a result of the bike survey number one, we had over 500 people respond to that survey. It was online. We also did, we attended Big Bike Night, we attended Bike the Ridge, where we did iPad surveys. We also went to coffee shops. We went to Starbucks, and kind of where people were in a more relaxed environment and willing to take a survey, and we will do that again for Bike Survey 2. So 64% of those people identified themselves as the recreation casual bicyclists. Some of the challenges that they identified, number one and two, were the lack of bike lanes and unsafe bike lanes. 80% were concerned about motorists not sharing the road with bicyclists. 72 were concerned about the negative interactions between motorists and bicyclists. 61% were concerned about bicyclists not following traffic laws, and 75% were concerned about bicyclists riding on sidewalks. So what we did was, when we looked at developing the questions and where we needed further input in the development for survey number two, we used that date, the data that I just described to you from survey one, and we developed survey two to try to address the following. The development of more comfortable corridors to address that 60% recreation student rider. We looked at the opportunity to expand bike parking facilities and locations, because that was one of the other issues that was raised. And then, last but not least, we wanted to develop harmony and safety between the various modes. And so we explored different ways that we can do that. One involved education, the other one involved the expanding the bike network, and the last was to focus on restrictions. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the restrictions piece, because that seems to have caused a little bit of stress. And so those restrictions were really based on some high-stress corridors. And so, I wanted to provide everybody with an opportunity of what made those corridors high stress. So, and what we did, and what the survey does, it only seeks input on those corridors that have characteristics that are similar to Ridge. So I've identified the various criteria and how that corridor meets those criteria, from whether there were a bus route, the truck route, high traffic counts, high bicycle accidents, commuter corridor, and narrow width. And one of the things that was really interesting in the public meeting in particular, there were comments that were made that, "Oh, nobody ever bikes on Dempster. I never see a bike on Dempster." And Dempster actually has a high number of bike accidents. So there are bicyclists out there, and so what we're trying to do is really establish harmony, and we want to know what not only the bikers think, but also what the drivers think. So, the survey is now live, so that people can go complete the survey, and I've created, provided the link, it's www.cityofevanston.org/bikeability. And I just want to remind everybody, this survey is just to design the residents' priorities and concerns relative to biking in Evanston. We sought to give all modes a voice in the survey and make no assumptions about what people thought and felt. It was based on, the original, the first survey actually helped us develop the questions for the second survey, and these were clear concerns that the residents raised in the first survey. And I think that in order for me to do my job properly for, is to provide you with all of the information and all of the opinions that the community brings forth. And so, and that's, the final report will include a summary of the survey results, and any implementation of any elements of the plan will follow a public information and comment process that we do for every project that we do. So the plan will be presented to council this July 2014. So I'll be helping to answer any questions that you may have.
Alderman Burris.
Thank you, Suzette, and thank you for clarifying. I know I got many emails about the banning bikes on particular streets. This weekend, I, actually on Sunday, I saw bikers on Ridge. What happens if we see bikers on Ridge? Are people ticketed, or what, what is the enforcement of not having bikes on Ridge? I mean, it's, it seems a little dangerous, but I'm just, would like to know.
The police do have the ability to issue seat tickets, and they do, just like they do, they will issue tickets to trucks, because Ridge is also a no-trucking road as well. So, so that's what should be happening.
Alderman Holmes.
Director Robson, only because this question sort of came up at our award meeting last week, in terms of, you can say that, but by the time someone calls the police, the bikers are gone. So I think that's probably going to come up to us in terms of, if there's no identification, there's no way to identify the bikes, because they don't have license, so there's nothing the citizens or the drivers would be able to do. So that's probably a question that's going to come up later, in terms of, do the bicycle needs license, so that people would be able to report it. So I just want to let you know, because that was a discussion that we had.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Director Robinson. I just have a couple of quick questions, and you pointed this out in a previous slide, and my question is, do you know how many accidents, bike accidents, that we've had for 2013?
I do not have that number, but I can get it for you.
Okay. I have a meeting that's coming up with a number of residents, and myself, and maybe Alderman Wilson, along Davis Street, where we're going to install a new bike lane. And so my follow-up question is, how did your department notify the families or residents along the new bike lane? Was there any special notice that went out to them, or was it just through the general correspondence?
For the Davis Street?
Yes.
There is no decision that's been made on Davis Street yet.
Thank you.
We, we knew that from, that we need to connect along Davis, to connect back to the bike path on Church, and how we do that was the process. So that's what should have been announced in the newsletter, and that was a mistake on my part, that the information was not conveyed clearly.
Okay.
That we will hold a public meeting and provide a variety of alternatives on how we could connect back to the bike path and come up with the best solution for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Suzette, how, what was the timing like as far as the survey and, you know, the cutoff date? And how is the city going to actually get this message out to a broader audience? I presume you've collected a lot of emails through this process, but to even extend it further and get more of a community, a wide community, you know, survey?
The survey, we'll be taking, the survey will be up until June 20th. We plan to, everybody that provided an email to us as a part of the original survey will also get this second survey. So it will go out to those, it will go out in the e-news as a press release. And we will also do the iPad surveys at various locations. So if you have a particular location within your ward where you would like us to come to, please let us know. And I have some interns, and we actually come, we will come to coffee shops, we've gone to Whole Foods, we'll come to the grocery store, and, you know, it's usually where people are kind of in a more relaxed mode, that they'll kind of fill them out. The train stations don't work so well, because there, if you're running for the train, you're not interested in talking to anybody. So, you know, Barnes &amp; Noble, the library, we'll go wherever we can to make sure we get a wider audience.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. You each have three minutes. I'm going to call the first four names. Please give your name and address. Mike Vasilko, Betty Esther, Eleanor Ravel, and Steve Perkins.
Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. Just touched briefly on two items. Agenda item SP-2, I strongly support the initiative to strengthen Evanston's climate action plan, keep setting the goals higher and higher, as far as I'm concerned. Agenda item SP-1, cradle to career funding. On this issue, I, you know, it may be a very noble cause, I just don't feel this is a fundraiser, a taxpayer item that should be burdened on the taxpayers. I don't think it should be city-funded, and that's my opinion on that. I also have, speak a little bit longer on agenda item SP-3, the disposable plastic shopping bags, which I hope you will take up and pass ban similar to that, and maybe stronger than that, passed recently by the City of Chicago. Evanston's ban, as far as I'm concerned, should prohibit the use of all plastic bags, all businesses within Evanston's borders, and tax those who enter Evanston with a plastic bag in their car or anything, because it's just something that's become more and more in the news. I think a lot of you, unfortunately, we've seen, you know, reports of the flight that was lost. I don't think they've ever found it yet, but what we did find was, or what I heard on the news was this, these huge apparent gyres, they're called, of circular patterns of currents that trap plastic of all kinds, and other trash, of course, but plastic is a huge contributor to these gyres that are in all of the oceans. There's one even reported being in the Great Lakes, which the plastic breaks down into smaller and smaller pieces, eventually into the molecular form. That's entered into our food chain by the fish and water that we eat and drink. So in effect, as was reported in a Tribune, we are in effect beginning to eat the garbage that we dispose of. According to the same article I'm referring to, Americans use an estimated $100 billion plastic bags each year, shopping plastic bags each year. Chicago, because this article was about Chicago, the numbers translate into 74,000 plastic bags used in each of the city's 50 wards, that's 74,000 in each ward approximately each day. So what they calculated was 3.7 million bags are used every day in Chicago, at a cost of about $74,000 a day, because those bags cost 2 or 3 cents each. So, in my opinion, please ban those bags. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Cherry Street. I'm going to be speaking on SP-3, but before I do, I had offered thank you to one of the truck drivers that shoveled the snow. Tonight, I met him. His name is Avin, and he comes along and cleaned the snow, so I didn't have to walk too far to climb over the hot snow. So I really appreciated him during this snow time. What the gentleman said about the plastic bag, that might be true, they are, might be a nuisance, we might be eating them. I don't know that, I haven't yet that study. But one thing I do know, from the people that goes to the grocery stores and stuff, sometimes they need the plastic bag, because when they catch the buffs, trying to carry a paper bag, your purse, and a bag of groceries that has more than three or four items in it, it's kind of hard. They tear, you lose them. Everybody do not have the little, purchase the little bags, or go to enough events that they can get the bags free. I have took a look in my neighborhood to see how many plastic bags I would find in the alley, on the streets, and I really don't see that many, because one thing, and I asked the people, what did they do with the plastic bag that they got from the store? Most of them use them as garbage bags. They use to put their trash in, because buying plastic trash bags are expensive. So, to do away with the trash bag, you hurt not only some seniors, your homeless, when they do need those, especially now. We are in a food desert, and where I have to go to go to the grocery store, I have to walk at least seven blocks to get to the grocery store if I'm going to get some milk or one item in something, and if I don't have one of the little bag, and I'm coming home and say, "Oop, I forgot, I need some milk." So they put it in the trash in the plastic bag, and it's easy for me to carry than trying to carry it in a paper bag. It was unfortunate when whoever designed the paper bag didn't think of the future and says, "What will the impact they will have down the line?" We need to start thinking about the impact that it will have on the people that is using those bags now. If we can't come up with an alternative without having them to pay extra money for a bag, or...
Ms. Esther, I need you to wrap up.
Thank you. Then we don't need to be getting rid of them until we have a solid plan that will help the homelessness, the seniors, and those people that need the plastic bag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eleanor Ravel. I live at 2815 Lakeside Court, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my sustainability colleagues. All of them in the audience are wearing their wonderful livability buttons, and we're just here to express our support for the livability plan and the new climate action goal that Catherine Hurley is going to be presenting to you shortly, and to let you know that we are all standing at the ready to help implement that plan and make Evanston the most livable city in America.
Thank you very much.
I'm Steve Perkins, 1127 Hull Terrace. I'm here to speak to the livability plan and just talk a minute about history. The original climate action plan was developed in 2008, 2009, through a really unusual partnership between the city and citizens. And when it was adopted in 2009, we knew that we had taken a really ambitious step. And although there were over 200 proposals as to how we might lower our emissions, we really didn't know what would work. And a little over four years later, four and a half years, actually, we actually met the goal. And I think we need to step back and acknowledge what a rare thing it is in the United States for a city to adopt a goal, and then to actually meet that goal. Evanston is a pretty special place, I think, and we should, we should be very proud of ourselves. We're now have the opportunity to adopt another goal. It'll be a stretch again. I'd be a fool if I thought I was, knew exactly how we're going to meet it. But what the goal does is it establishes a benchmark that we can judge ourselves by, and we can keep looking creatively to find the strategies that can actually work. And so I want to thank the council for its commitment last time and encourage you to keep going on it, and to continue the partnership with citizens, because actually, I mean, the city itself did a fantastic job at lowering its own emissions, but the city's like 4% of the total emissions. So there has to be this partnership between the city and the community, and that's happening. And so I think we have a chance to make history here, and in three years or thereabouts, I'm going to come back and be part of ushering in the next phase. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next is Tracy Hubbard, Nick Long, and Priscilla Giles.
Hi, I'm Tracy Hubbard, 1700 Oakton, and I'm happy to be here representing the Evanston Environmental Association, otherwise known as the EEA. The EEA is a nonprofit organization, and we are here to support the livability plan that's being presented tonight. The EEA has been a partner with many great programs that have actually bubbled up through this or been part of it, among them the Evanston Green Living Fest, the Wild and Scenic Film Fest in February, and we have upcoming the Green Ball. I know many of you are coming. We hope that there's space for more, and we'd love to see everybody there. But ultimately, we are here to support this plan, because we really believe that through education and through working, that we can sustain our city. And it's for us now, for our children and for their future children, that they really can come and relish everything that we so appreciate within the city. So we support it, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
This is Nick Long. I'm at 3110 Thayer. Here in my role as the Deputy Commissioner of Evanston AYSO, and also as the Fields Director for AYSO, I have been coaching soccer for my kids since 2005. The Red Rockets were the first team. And I'm now actually somehow finding myself coaching fifth and sixth grade lacrosse. I'm here to talk about SP-6, the, one of the discussions about looking for a grant for field turf. AYSO is wholeheartedly in favor of this and supports, you know, the push to do this. It would be a tremendous enhancement to our fields here in Evanston, whether it's at Lovelace, James Park, or Talmage, wherever, you know, our fields are taking a beating from the weather, and obviously the snow, as we've discussed, we pushed back the start of AYSO season for a week this year because of the weather. Jim Farrar is who we work with, and he's been fantastic, and he says, "Hey, we can't play in the fields. We had this happen last week, and so we have to communicate that to our teams." With field turf, we would be able to have multiple sports going on, soccer, lacrosse, potentially football, and probably things I'm not thinking of, field hockey perhaps, if that became something that was a priority. And so we would be able to serve multiple constituencies within the city, boys and girls, and I think it would be, it would make our sports infrastructure very attractive to hold tournaments and other activities that certainly have a financial, potentially a positive financial impact going forward. So as this goes forward, assuming the council decides to vote on this, AYSO would be more than happy to work with you to help build this and, you know, using the people that we work with, within the soccer community and also lacrosse community, bring everyone together to make sure that we're putting a good bid forward to the U.S. Soccer Foundation and make this happen. So we, first of all, are very appreciative that you're considering this. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I live at 1829 Ashland Avenue. And before you forget, the meeting that was held here about snow being removed from alleys and sidewalks that it used to be, and this was a conversation in the council meeting, I don't want you to forget that when you plan for next winter, snow removal. I'd like to also speak to SP-1, cradle to... Cradle to Career Initiatives, and I think that should be a joint effort between the Boards of Education and the city. I don't think that it's going to cost too much money to train and educate people to be able to take care of themselves and to be, to contribute to the tax base here in Evanston. I'd also like to speak to the disposable plastic shopping bag issues, and I think that people need to use the pla, people who do use the plastic bags need to use them, and I think that there should be an alternative if you think that they cannot be used. Something that people could use when they walk their dogs. I can't think of a cloth bag that you would do that with. I can't think of anything that you would use but a plastic bag. And I know that they're for sale, but people don't really use those small bags. They're used for many other things beside throwing in the air. And if you're a good neighbor, you will make sure that there are no plastic bags in your yard in the morning when you wake up, and at night maybe too. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Next is Special Orders of Business City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, several items this evening. First, as some of the public speakers have mentioned, they're, we're here to have a presentation from a group that has been working on an Evanston Cradle to Career program. Mr. McCray, are you going to give the introductory
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager, and Deputy City Clerk, Blackman. My name is Joe McRae. I'm the Deputy City Manager and Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services. Here to introduce to you all tonight several of the individuals that I've been working with Cradle to Career Initiative on, program that you'll find out more about tonight, give an overview through a PowerPoint presentation, and also entertain questions. With me tonight is Seth Green, the Executive Director of YU, Mary Beth Schroeder of the Evanston Community Foundation, and Pastor Mark Dennis, who has several hats right now. He's pastor of Second Baptist and also the newly appointed Executive Director of the YMCA. And so they will be coming before you to provide the PowerPoint presentation, and then will be available afterwards to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Joe, and good evening, Mayor Tisdall and Alderman. And let me just also recognize Sarah Shastak of ECF and Andrea Dencham. They are part of the extraordinary Steering Committee that has been working together toward this Cradle to Career Initiative, which we are excited to formally introduce after having had many conversations with you. And this will test my, there we go. I realize generationally I should be familiar with these devices. Evanston Collective Impact. So Cradle to Career is our way of trying to coordinate stakeholders to build a greater impact on the issue of human development from, as it says, cradle, when young people come into the world at birth, to when they pursue vibrant careers. And just to piggyback on the bike discussion that we heard about before this, if you think about bike lanes, if you have a lot of groups building those lanes, that's an improvement. But when those lanes all intersect and align, what happens is that people can now go on a long route, and the collective impact of those lanes becomes much greater than those being independent parts. And so it just felt as we were hearing that Public Works discussion, and we were envisioning what this can look like for the community, that could be a visual in your minds for what Cradle to Career is about. How do we bring these lanes together so that the family can really move along and go all the way from a starting place to an end place of a successful life? Where this idea comes from, although it may be very intuitive to all of you, is a specific initiative that was started in Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky. And the needs assessment that originated said, we are a community where we have a lot of programs, but we don't have the system to connect everything. They called it resource-rich, or program-rich, and system-poor. And in many ways, that resonated with many of the leaders in the nonprofit community who feel similarly about Evanston. Wow, do we have a lot of resources. It's enormous to be here and to see all of the nonprofits, but how do we connect all of that? And when we do, what's the impact? And Strive, as you can see, has made gains at every level. So kindergarten readiness, high school graduation, and college enrollment by really aligning those bike lanes and making sure that kids are moving successfully through each step. Since this came in 2006, there are literally hundreds of communities now working to replicate this. And indeed, when Advance Illinois had a conference earlier this year, there were scores of groups from across our state who were embarking on this, and we are thrilled to be joining them. So our mission here is to mobilize our community assets. We are fortunate that we come from a place of strength in terms of the size and the intensity of the assets in our community. And our vision, better reflected on the back of your report, which is not cut off as the PowerPoint is, is that by age 23, all Evanston young adults will be leading productive lives, building on the resources, education, and support that they and their families have had, to help them grow into resilient, educated, healthy, self-sufficient, and socially responsible adults. I want to recognize that this is a statement that reflects both best practice and a very intentional process with the stakeholders in this community to build a shared vision. It started over a year ago with representatives from nonprofits and from the big institutions, staff from the city and from the two school districts, and it has continued with regular meetings and organic growth since then. And so this has really been a snowball that has built, and that, as we come to you tonight, you'll hear, is gaining a lot of ground. In terms of the key points, I think that, you know, the basic idea is, how do you create a real system? And that starts with shared vision. It's reinforced by accountability and measurement, so that we're actually looking at the progress we're making and the gaps that we have. And then it's using this backbone support organization to really try to realign resources around those goals, so that we're putting our emphasis on strategic interactions. And finally, I'll just leave you and turn it over to Mary Beth by showing what we see as the guiding principles. They feel probably, as you look at them, a little bit, you know, like, you know, pie and the American flag, but what they reflect is core commitments of the stakeholders to shared goals that unite our experience. And so I believe that having that clarity around what we're trying to achieve will really help us as we get to the next stage in implementation. And let me with that turn it over to Mary Beth.
Okay, even though, see, I'm older, so I do need instruction. What do I hit here?
Press that button right there.
Thank you. And I'm Mary Beth Schroeder. I'm Vice President for Programs at Evanston Community Foundation, and thanks again for hearing this this evening. So how do we make that work? You know, as Seth said, that all looks a little like American pie and great values. How do you make it happen? So for the last over a year, a planning group has been meeting that came out of initially several really large meetings, at which we had many players from the business community, from the nonprofit community, again, city staff, school staff as well. And we developed this planning committee, because everybody, the group agreed, we should go ahead and try to make this happen. And that is a committee that's representative of many of those same partners. But we are sort of a self-appointed, you know, a group that was appointed to move forward. We really need a structure. So the structure that we imagine going forward is to have a steering committee, which would be responsible for hiring, and working with an executive director or coordinator, and the data analyst. Those two staff positions are really crucial to this effort, because that's, executive director coordinates the activities of the various work that's going on, and the data analyst is really crucial in all of these Cradle to Career initiatives, because this is very data-driven. So we look at, where are we now based on the data we have, and we set goals together to where do we want to be, and how do we combine across sectors what the data tells us about where children and youth are in this community and how we're impacting their development? That steering committee, we imagine having representatives from the key institutions, the school boards and the city, as well as representatives of nonprofits, and some community representatives from the communities most affected by these challenges. They will do the kind of overview work, but the work on the ground is going to be done in two ways. One is with solution design teams, who will focus on particular issues that we've identified as being key issues, again, that go from cradle to career throughout the lifecycle. And they, they'll be the ones meeting twice a month to work together to look at, what are we experiencing in the community? How can we change it? What have we learned from each other to change our practice to make things work better? At the same time, there are community coalitions, many of which already exist, in early childhood, in the land, working with school-aged children, as well as a number of workforce groups. So you'll see that this, how this works. The solution design teams, which you'll see on the right, will be working focused on five key areas. One, literacy from birth to career. One, community stability, including housing and poverty, because we recognize that children and youth and their families are impacted only a bit by school. School is one piece of the puzzle, but they spend many more hours outside of school than they do inside school. And how does the rest of their life impact their development? Mental and physical health and safety, career and post-secondary readiness, and parent engagement. So as an example of one way this might work is in parent engagement. If we look at, we know, all the research tells us, that when parents are engaged in their children's education and their lives, kids do better. We know that in early childhood, many programs very effectively engage parents, and parents feel welcome, they feel engaged, they know, they get help in how to work with their children. Once they get to school age, often parents report that they feel less welcome, they feel less engaged. Can older, programs serving older kids learn from the experience of early childhood and bring that experience to bear so that we are really welcome to parents throughout the lifecycle? So how do we get to this structure? By putting together a coalition of groups that will help fund this. And I'll turn that over to Reverend Dennis.
Good evening, and it's good to make this presentation to you, because it represents the community, and it represents each of us. Collective impact really means that we're all invested in raising one child, in making sure that we don't point fingers just to the school system to do our jobs, or to blame parents alone. But to ask the question, how are we all vested in the success or the future of each child? It's easy to point fingers at District 6 or 5 or 2 or 2, but that has to cease. And I'm not accusing anybody of doing that. Collective impact says that we participate equally from what we're doing. We don't have to change our missions necessarily. We just need to think differently and be prepared to take the level of responsibility that is ours to ensure different things are happening, so we can see measured qualitative and quantitative increases, thus making a difference in the future success of our community and, most of all, our children. For example, we've already tested at my congregation, a way in which how this might work, if literacy is a variable worth valuing, and there's plethora of research already on the level of literacy and time process management, it says to us that in our congregation on Sunday, every Sunday, we must have children read in front of the public in order to value what we believe in our sacred doctrine, but more importantly, so that the continuum is connected. The flow of reading occurs not just at the school, not sometimes at home, and if at home, but is assured even when they go to a house of worship. Collective impact says that we will invest together at an affordable point of entry. It's good to talk about it, but to come up with a level of investing in this project, particularly in year one. Year one, we make a tremendous difference in years two and three by saying to others, other funders, we, the community, are vested in this initiative moving forward. This first year, we are committed at X, Y, Z level. These are all the participants and all the players. And so there is a gradation of leadership. Do I turn this up? How do I do this?
Side one, Mark.
Side one here.
I'm glad you were-
All right, very good. So you may need to put your glasses on a little bit, but it gives you a sense of the level of affordability and probable points of entry. And we gave a lot of thought to this, how can we come up with a scale that will allow every nonprofit and organization, even corporations in this community, to have a point of entry that is affordable and doable? That's the chart that we're using currently, and we are pleased to say that several groups have already jumped in. The timeline for this is, it has already started, March the 28th through November of this year, many different things will occur. We have, as I said, secured fundings from the partners. We've even had a few people individually so compassionate about this, that they're willing to give their individual funds to this initiative in the first year. We will not touch our donors. We felt that that would be too competitive, so from our organizations, we thought that this would be a very strong way to say to the community, we as leaders are vested in this initiative. In the next slide, you see that we've raised $138,000 to date, with $50,000 commitments from each school district. That's, that's worth, in my tradition, that's worth saying, that's good stuff. To start off at the very beginning, just beginning, to be able to raise that amount of money here, the progress to date, we have committed partnerships from these organizations at different levels of funding, and we are proud that they have stepped quickly on board. We have these potential partners that presentations have already started. We are hoping and believing that they will say yes in the next 90 days, and thus we will get closer to that funding level. So in the, in the interest of brevity and time, and so that we might be able to answer your questions, we just simply want to say we need your support. We need your, we need the advocacy that you bring. We need your investment as a community, and this is our time to collectively make a difference and have an impact upon the community. We would not be here, seriously, at all, spending all these hours over the last years, volunteers, on a Friday morning, early in the morning, unless there was something magneted about this whole process. People have come, people have inquired, and when people see the vision, people tend to get on board, and it has been sustained. We believe that there is a movement, not only around the country, that we have seen from San Diego, Cincinnati, and other parts of the country. There's a move to say, what we have done is good, but we can do better. Collective impact, we believe, says we can do better by being jointly vested and also holding everybody accountable for the role they play in developing one child in the entire village. Thank you very much for you listening, and thank you for your support.
Alderman Burris.
Hi. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. First is, the city staff involved in this, could, and were any elected officials from the city asked to be involved in this?
From the beginning, all of the organizations involved had staff, just as the schools did, and all of us were staff as opposed to our board members. So-
I'm sorry, from city government. I apologize.
No, I understand that. I'm saying the parallel is, for all the organizations involved, it has been staff rather than board members, or, you know, they're sort of equivalent of elected officials. So we had not, we did not have any elected officials, but we have had a city representative at the table since the very beginning.
And who is that?
Joe McCray.
Right. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just have a couple other questions.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The mental health board, have they been participants in this project? And the reason why I think that's an important entity to work with is, one, we give them a heck of a lot of money, every, from the city government, every, every year, and looking at how they do their funding and trying to coordinate across a variety of different mechanisms- at how they do their funding and trying to coordinate across a variety of different mechanisms. They seem to be, that that would be a really good partner for a cradle-to-career because the agencies they're funding really do cradle to career and beyond. So I think that's really important.
Great idea.
And then, I didn't see the Youth Job Center. I would say that they're probably, I didn't think I saw.
They were on, if they aren't in the second slide, it's just, we're doing a presentation.
Oh, there, I see, I do see it now on the slide.
We just haven't, we've got a meeting scheduled at their board, it's just, you know, scheduling these all takes.
Right, and the reason I say that is, they're probably the permanent workforce development entity in Evanston without that, without them at the table.
And Kim Hoobing Garner from the Youth Job Center is part of the planning committee as well.
Great. And then my final, actually, I'm sorry, two more. Another one is Rotary. We were just at a meeting at Rotary, and they were very clear that they want to be more involved in the community. There's funding for, through Rotary, and they want to find a way, more way to be connected. This seems right up their alley. And then really, this is my final comment for now, is something I'd asked the city manager for, I guess at our, the last human, right before the last human services meeting, is how much funding from the city is spent with not-for-profits in the community? So the mental health board is one pot, about $800,000 a year, give or take tens of thousands. But then there's community development block grant money, there's economic development money. So I think that would be a good number to share with you of all the resources that are already coming from city government to the organizations that you're talking about working of this cradle-to-career, and that maybe some of those organizations can help divert some of that funding to this initiative as well. So that will be a good number, and I know that you're working on it.
Do you think any of those organizations are already partners?
Right, but, but what I'm saying is, there's well over $1 million, probably 1.5 to 2 million, they're already coming from the city to these initiatives in the community, and that would be good for your, or your group to know where those buckets of money are and how they're being utilized to help move forward.
Thank you for that, thank you for the information. And as to the Rotary, it's my understanding that both the noon and the mornings groups have been approached, and there is on the agenda, upcoming agenda, another time for a presentation.
But are you talking about Rotary International as an organization?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And just to echo what you said, Alderman Burris, the 1.5 to 2 million dollars of investment the city makes, in many ways, I see this as an opportunity to further elevate the impact of the extraordinary human services commitment the city already has. So I just want to use that as an opportunity to say, wow, the city is a true partner in what we do, and to also encourage then, you know, for this to be an opportunity to make every one of those dollars even more valuable. I know that's a little shameless, but.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had questions about everything from operational and how to fund operations long-term, because this is a generational undertaking. This is not a two, three-year project. This is going to have a trajectory that takes us out, we hope, for at least, you know, to see the effects in a couple generations. And what do you envision, what does the steering committee envision as our long-term operational source of funding for this? The two, the seed money that, that the school districts have committed and the other agencies would be used then for initial first-year funding, and then there are the long-term operational costs.
I think we would anticipate that all the partners would continue funding at a lower level than the seed money from all of us, because again, we see this as a core part of the work we are all doing. The city's investments, the school board's investments, all of our investments in this community. There are potential ways that other money can come in from foundations.
Leveraging.
For example, today, Sarah and I had a meeting with the staff person from, why am I forgetting the name?
Advance Illinois.
Advance Illinois, which is a statewide education advocacy group. And we were talking to the staff person about the Lumina Foundation, which is doing some funding in communities around their 60 by 25 initiative, which is to, their goal is that by 2025, 60% of Americans would have a high-quality post-secondary education, might be a certificate, might be an A or a B. This is the kind of initiative that might, and make us the kind of community that would be attractive to a foundation like that. But I think, we have to be honest, that there will always be a need for local funding as well.
Locally-based funding, yeah. And the solution design teams you envision then as being the connectors, helping connect all the programs that are exist, initiatives that are exist, and aligning then for each individual that we're hoping to touch with the cradle-to-career, aligning so that it's a seamless transition as they age through either educational system or the community support system in a way that they don't drop off as a five-year-old entering kindergarten and.
As you can imagine, one of the difficulties in education tracking is agreement on the systems, and the variables, and the language, and the jargons, and the way in which to measure apples to apples and oranges to oranges. This is an attempt to say, we all have metrics that are different and some similar, but we will work at agreeing on what's important to measure progress and measure improvement, and affirm those as a community, and use those as the basis and the guidance, as a guide for tracking whether or not a person or group of people are below or above. So again, look, searching for a common language, common variables, common ways to measure those measurements without talking at cross purposes with one another, is very important to this.
Perhaps just to make that very tangible as an example, when YOU passed its 2013 to 2015 strategic plan, we did an environmental needs assessment where we went around to a number of peer leaders and people in the city government and said, you know, what are the core needs that you see? And then we tried to figure out, how do we address those needs? When we do our next strategic plan for 2016 to 2018, what I anticipate is literally starting with these solution design teams' answers as to, here are, you know, core needs, and here are core gaps. And then, when we look at parental engagement, we now are intentionally aligning our strategies against those. And what it means is that we're able to see, okay, here's what early childhood is doing. Here is what's happening on the career side. Okay, so how do we provide an intentional bridge? And for everyone to be working off that same framework, rather than for each group to be doing its own environmental assessment and its own strategic plan independently, it creates an alignment. Ultimately, there's going to be both bottom-up and top-down, so it's not that this is going to set the standard for everything that's done across the nonprofit community. It's going to create a North Star, though, that everyone agrees on, and then that everyone aligns to. And so it is a very intentional process around how do we bring together resources? And it will happen, to your point, over a generation, because it will be groups, as they set their plans, aligning this, that will ultimately bear the full impact of the collaboration.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And I was lucky enough to have had an opportunity to attend one of the presentations that was given a while back, as well as other opportunities to hear some of the information. So I, I got a much more in-depth look at all of this, and I guess one of the things that impressed might be the wrong word, but this is really more about an infrastructure. It's not, I've heard people in the community kind of make comments, well, what's so different about this group? Why do they think they're going to come in and do any, you know, miraculous? This isn't a group, this is infrastructure for the existing groups. And we do give out, the city gives out a tremendous amount of money, there are donations that people give in the community, but this will create those opportunities for collaborations. And well, I think, from what I've seen, it's going to greatly improve the accountability. So it's going to help us see how the groups are working together. I know CD to BG, we hear presentations, there are lots of groups that request money, and it always occurs to different members of the panel, you know, are you working with this group? Are you working with this group? Have you talked to this group? And sometimes the answer is yes, but a lot of times the answer is no. So I think this is going to present a really strong opportunity and have that in-place infrastructure all of the time, not just kind of a one-shot deal. It's, I think, Alderman Grover, you referred to it as generational, but that's what it is. This is going to be something that's in place for all of the groups. So I'm interested and intrigued, and I think this is, a lot of work and time and effort's been put into the process and into this infrastructure. So I'm interested to see how it's going to work out.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I guess I'll pick up where Alderman Wilson left off just by saying thank you all, just for all the effort and time that you've put into it. And I've had an opportunity also to meet with a few members of the steering committee just to get a better and broader understanding of what you're trying to do. I also understand that this is still in formation, so here are the comments that I've sort of jotted down, and I've also shared a few of these with the groups. I would love to add one metric, if we do agree as a city council to fund above what we already do, and that is to make sure that they're tax-paying residents. I think that simple statement says a lot, and that will help to clarify the city's investment above and beyond what we also do. And then the other thing that I shared, and I don't make any apologies in this statement, I really think we need to be clear in identifying who your target group is. I understand individually who you all represent, but who is your target group? And I don't think we should be afraid to say that. So if it's black, let's put black in there. If it's Hispanic, let's put Hispanic in there. If it's low-income, let's be clear and define it. Because if not, then I think the criticism and the concern that I have is exactly, you know, who are the superpowers coming together to help? So that's something that's missing for me. The other piece that I wanted to share is, and I shared this with two individuals, that's very important to me, is addressing the family. And I think you've all said that, and I know what your organizations do, but one of the desires that I had hoped for is, and I've shared this in a conversation with the mayor, is if I, we, had the resources to personally have an impact on 10 families in town, we would change the whole face of Evanston. And so, you know, as I look at your guiding principles, I just insert family, family collective impact, family holistic learning and growth, family resources, family support service and structure, family community engagement and development, is just something that I would offer you to consider. And again, I understand that it's a lot deeper than it's wide, but just to be able to put that in the front of your commission, mission statement says a lot. And then clearly, after defining your target group, I think it's just important, and I realize, again, this is in formation, and I think I've paid attention to the tiers, that at some level on the steering committee to have a representation from that target group, to be at the table when you're discussing, when you're talking about policies, outcomes, et cetera, I think is also very important. How you find that individual, I don't know, but I think that, from a community aspect, that that is very, very important. And lastly, I think that we can take a few lessons from the very folks that are in this room. I applaud the tree people here in town. I think that trees and the fact that we're able to tout that this city is, you know, number one of the best tree cities, I want to be able to say that about our kids, especially about our kids of color. And I think, Alderman Burris, when you ask for that number, I think it's also important to note just how much the city of Evanston pays for its trees. And so if we can be able to say, the same way the tree lovers say, that our kids are number one in this category, number one in this category, and break down how much we spend in each individual category, I think we would have come a long way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wenman.
Thanks, did you want to respond?
No, that's good.
Sorry, I never meant to cut off Reverend Dennis.
Oh, thank you very much. I agree with the things that Alderman Wilson and Alderman Braithwaite have said, and other members of the city council. I do, I think one of the questions that has come to mind, and I've been to several of the meetings, is, as always with the city council, obviously, we see what the long vision is, and you all see what the long vision is, and I think that's very, very important to do. But what is, what is the shorter-term vision? I mean, what's, in five years, what do you see the, being accomplished or a structure being created, or what, what is it that you see for five years or 10 years? Because I think that's some of what I, we all want to, those are the first steps. So how do you get there? I mean, I've seen, I've read the materials, and I don't quite, I'm still learning all the lingo. A solution design team seems odd to me, but that's, you know. So I think that, but where, what's five years down the road?
Absolutely. So let me first say what's a year down the road, because that sets up for five years, and it also manages expectations. Our goal in the next year is really to build the infrastructure, and that includes hiring the staff and then benchmarking. So we really have a clear baseline as to where we are now and who's contributing what. And then setting our vision four, five years and 10 years from now with very measurable outcome goals, which we can't set until we have the baseline data against which to demarcate them. And there's a whole kind of universe out there from these other communities that have done strive in terms of if we are the best, so to speak, to Alderman Braithwaite, in supporting kids, what can we expect to achieve over that four-year period that's still left, over the nine-year period after that? And where we believe we will have impact is in areas like kindergarten readiness, like high school graduation. And the reason will be that everyone is aligned. So kids are reading books at the church, kids are reading books in YOU, and we're reinforcing those shared priorities. And other things may be dropping off, and the result is that we're really strengthening the core metrics that everyone has agreed are our shared vision of success. And so a year from now, you will see what we consider to be leading metrics in terms of participation rates and in terms of infrastructure and agreement. Five years from now, we hope you'll begin to see, begin to see the types of collective impact in outcomes for kids and families that we have seen in Cincinnati and other communities. Is that?
I guess, yes, I understand that, but what, I'm assuming that most of this data, a lot of this data is already out there, that, that we're concerned about, and a lot of it is understanding the data and pulling it together, and then figuring out what, where the holes are. So what do we know now that, that you think, just give me a, for instance, give me something that's more concrete?
We created a beginning group of metrics, that is data that we know already exists, that ranges all the way from health metrics, like how many kids are vaccinated in the community, because that's an element of what leads people to success. It's sort of, tells you something about parent engagement, for one thing, tells you about kids and their families' access to family, to healthcare. Once we have the data, and that the beginning part is gathering all this data so you can sort of cross-tabulate it, then the steering committee, along with the teams, set, will set the goals. If it turns out that 75% of kids are vaccinated, then a legitimate goal is to say, by this time, we want to have 95. If we're already at 85%, 95, you know what I mean? You need to set goals that are realistic, but are stretch goals as well. So we have to pull those pieces of data together. We have metrics around health, we've created the metrics around graduation rates, reading rates, reading levels. We have metrics around sort of safety pieces, you know, the number of kids engaged in the criminal justice system. And then out of that, the steering committee will set, what are the metrics that we jointly all agree this is what we, the goals that we want to get to?
You already have all of those metrics?
We have suggested metrics. Again, we're the planning group, so we feel some of this has to come from the steering committee and the teams as they gather. Does that make sense?
We have, we have pockets of data all over the community. What we don't have is a central place for all that data to be gathered in such a sufficient way that we can do a comparative analysis in a timely, reasonable, understandable way. We all have our assumptions, and we all have our thoughts. One of the ways in which we can move forward with this, to go back to Alderman Breffway's statement, we know that parents are not involved at the same level of equity as we like to see. What does that mean? That means different things to different people, but that is an area that we know makes a difference, is a great predictive variable that makes a difference. We can start there, and we're not saying here tonight that that's where we're going to start, but that is an example of what we need to do. Parents must be more involved in the education and ownership of their children's education. Parents need education to be parents. And, and that's something that we don't want to admit, and something that we all assume. But as a parent of four myself and a grandfather of five, I understand that it takes a little while to learn it. And, and if we can find a way to change that around, so there's no more trial and error, but there are variable ways in which we can help parents become more effective parents with power, with dignity, with presence, and a sense of peace in their mind that their child is receiving the best education possible, that alone can make a tremendous difference. child is receiving the best education possible, that alone can make a tremendous difference.
Yeah. I have just one more point to make. I think that, that the 10 of us here on the city council are very important players in this initiative, and it's really important to bring us in and to discuss all of this with us. I think we're a little different than a board of a not-for-profit. And it's, I think, as you can tell, we're all very interested in this, but I think we need to know, we need to be kept more in the loop of what you're doing.
And we promise to do that, and we will demonstrate that in different ways into the future. I must also add that Joe McCray has done a great job representing each of you.
Oh, of course.
And he has helped us tremendously, but we promise to make sure that happens for every Alderman here tonight and into the future.
And the mayor.
Yes. I said all 10.
Can I, can I add thank you for that comment? We are thrilled by the level of interest, and we are going to be stronger because of that interest. If you think about collective impact, the policies that you all set through C D B G, through Mental Health Board, and through all of the different aspects of community services and public works, I mean, those are all interconnected. So, I mean, the fact that you're offering and encouraging and telling us more is such an incredible affirmation, and it's enormously appreciated.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I must be the only person who's not seeing the vision here. First of all, as a taxpayer and as an Alderman for quite a few years, I always thought that the money I was spending on my taxes and the money I was voting to allocate was going to ensure that this infrastructure existed. I've been told for years that Youth Job Center is doing a magnificent job, and seeing all of their data, that Connections for the Homeless was doing a magnificent job. I know for a fact that Baby Toddler Nursery does a fabulous job, that the Y, W, Y, M, all of the programs do a fabulous job. And now I'm hearing that the ball has been dropped, and there's no way to coordinate or to confirm that, number one, children are advancing at the rate they're supposed to be advancing, et cetera, et cetera. I asked one of your key players the other day in a meeting with Joe McCray, why, why, what is the reason for this? And I was told that was a very good question that he could not answer. So right away, I got a little nervous. You're talking about bringing together all this data that all of your agencies, none of your agencies are for-profit. You're not really making money out there. You're getting grants and being funded by either taxpayer, everybody's a taxpayer, but either through public bodies or through private donations or foundations. You need to bring together some data. That's the reason for this. What contact have you had with Northwestern, with Kellogg, with any of the various departments there, I T, et cetera, to assist in this? I met a fellow the other night at the Rogers Park Business Alliance, who, who was just donated to this organization, to the organization's Board of Directors by Kellogg. He's just there all the time, guiding them, helping them, giving them insight where, you know, they're so busy doing their work, they, they don't have it. What, what are we doing with Northwestern? And, I mean, I'm sure Alderman Burris has, but I'm trying to ask information that she probably can't ask, so let's find out. What, what are they doing?
Let me first respond to the initial part of your statement and say...
I want to say one other thing.
Yeah, please, please.
These organizations that I mentioned, these are not fly-by-night groups, these are not groups that are growing and are, you know, grassroots-y. These are, you all are sophisticated, highly mature organizations who are very professional in your implementation of your programs. So we're not talking about people who are not capable of doing the work that you're all talking about. I, I'm just having a real problem with this whole new layer. And I, I mean, I see that this is on schedule for action tonight. Either I will be voting no or asking that it be held, because I'm not ready. Pardon me?
I don't think it is for action tonight.
Oh, well, I thought that's what the memo said. The cover memo says...
It's not intended on action tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, it is not in fact for, for action tonight. It's more of a presentation for council consideration. A formal request for financial support would come via a separate agenda.
But it will come.
It says right here for action.
Considering joining the Creative Career Initiative. But for, consider, that the council would consider joining the Creative Career Initiative.
Well, I thought that joining it meant we had to allocate $50,000. I mean, we've already joined it, you've already been working, spending lots of your time.
It's not official until the city council authorizes a financial support of the initiative, and so it's, it's up for consideration.
So for action means nothing? Because usually when we have for action, we're looking for a vote.
Just, just consideration is the only action we're looking for tonight.
So this is a mistake here?
Just, yes, just, just consideration is all we're looking for tonight.
Well, I really said my piece. I, I don't get it, I'm not on board, and I tried to explain that to the people I talked to the other day, because I don't see the need. I, I believe all of you are perfectly capable of, of adding this to your, you know, to your routine. I, I don't see why not. And if you all remember, you probably don't, there was a guy named Jay Terry who ran Human Services in this town for years, and he convened a group exactly like the group you're talking about, and did this kind of coordinating. And I, I really think that, you know, your, your budgets are sufficient that you could handle this task.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Holmes.
Seth.
Seth, you want to respond?
Well, I just want to respond with a brief analogy that I think speaks to your points, Alderman Rainey. You are right, first of all, that the groups involved in this are extraordinary groups making a real difference. If I can just offer the analogy of our Evanston Police Force, which is, you know, a group of people in different areas that are doing extraordinary work on the beat. And my understanding, knowing a little bit, but not enough, about police operations, is that you have all of those extraordinary forces out there doing great work, but when you bring the data together from all of the different beats, what happens is that you begin to put a collective picture, and then you begin to really identify, here are spots in advance. And my understanding of the gains that we've made in combating violence is that it has to do in part with that picture of all of the different incidents, and then how we really focus our resources on those areas. And so I just, I offer to you that you can have a lot of people doing great work, and our police force is doing great work every day, when you bring the data together. And our police force doesn't rely on the voluntary person that comes for a year from Kellogg and then goes back, and then you start with someone new. You need that type of institutional infrastructure over time to really build the data into a clear example for everyone else to be operationalizing. And so I don't know if that works, but it's in your wheelhouse, and so I just throw it out.
But they're not, they're doing that work in-house, and I'm asking you all to do your work in-house, that's all.
Right, but we're not one house, and that's what this is really allowing.
That's the problem. That's why it's more expensive.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I simply wanted to just pick up where Alderman Braithwaite left off in terms of the target population. And let's be upfront in the beginning, really identifying that, because I think we all know, we just need to say it out loud. And then, second, in terms of the representatives for the people that this is going to impact, what is the timeline and the plan for getting them to the table? I think I asked that when I met at the high school with the group and the presentations. I think probably all of us now have had a chance to hear, you know, the presentation outside, but never as a collective group. But I think those are two things that we really need to put more emphasis on, that I think people can better understand how that's going to, to, you know, how that's going to work. Okay?
While I'm very tempted to say the two targeted audiences are African-American and Hispanic, I hesitate on saying that with a level of confidence and level of significance. The data in one pool will indicate one thing. The data in another pool may say something else differently. We've heard that from social scientists, we've heard that from educators. We want to be sensitive to that. We do know that there is a, we do know that there's a glaring difference in the learning ability of children who come from impoverished homes.
There you go.
And where parents, and parents are not working, and also where families have moved often. We know that. That's a variable we can track, but knowing who's in that pool right now, we're not able to track that as sufficiently well as we would like to. Secondly, we will focus on every child, regardless of color and ethnicity, in ensuring that they can not just read at grade level, but excel. This is not about just meeting a quota. This is not about standardizing reading proficiency and efficiency. This is about helping a child to excel. That I hope you don't forget. Children break out of their cocoons at different stages, and not everybody learns at the same stage, nor can every child be measured by the same set of metrics at the same time. That's the difficulty of this work. That's the difficulty of this work with all of us with our greatness and our stellar organizations aside. We need to look at it with another level of eyes and objectivity. Northwestern has been involved with us. They have offered, they've, we're in discussion with them, but they are looking at the feasibility of how long this should be for them. They have another agenda. Yes, this is good data, rich data. They would love to have access to this data, and they would also like to own this data. There are different institutions that can do that and for other research purposes. We're saying that we need to find the right partners with us to look at the data, interpret the data, own the data, and help us to make a difference with the data. I think that's the best way I can respond.
Thank you, Pastor Jennings. I just want to simply say that until we tackle the issue of poverty, you know, none of us are going to get anywhere. So I was hoping that's the target, the target population. Yes, I understand that we'll be looking at African-Americans and Hispanic, but there are some poor people that have other colors and ethnic parts as well. But until we tackle that, because we know that that makes the ground unlevel and uneven, and until we get some, some of that, we, you know, we're all just talking out the sides of our mouths.
Thank you. Well, there are people who want to speak a second time, but I'm going to make my comments first, and my apologies, but I can't sit here any longer without doing it. Reverend Dennis, you've talked about, what did you say, working on an agreement on what's important to measure, and I am very concerned that the young people that the city works with every day become important enough to measure. And these are young people who have unfortunate statistics and make us ask uncomfortable questions. But when a young person is a high school graduate or a dropout, and they go to Youth Job Center or to National Label, and they can't pass the test, so they can't get Workforce Investment Act money to pay for workforce training, they are really pretty stuck. And when young people who have a high school degree or a GED cannot pass the test at Oakton and have to take remedial classes before they can take regular classes at Oakton, and they can't take the remedial classes because there's no money for remedial classes, all the money is for college-level classes, those kids are stuck. Those are the kids the City of Evanston is working with every day, and I want to be sure that when, if we give $50,000 for one year only, and we'll talk about it the following year, but if we do, I want to be sure that those kids are included and that data is included, and that we work on making their lives better. And since I'm not a part, as we've all said, and I agree that we're feeling a little out of sync with your organization, this is my chance to make sure that the kids we work with are included.
I think the kids that you are fortunately working with are the same kids that we see in our houses of worship and see in our classrooms and see on the street and see in counseling and see with their parents, who are looking for benevolent and charitable gifts from those institutions as well. I don't think we're speaking of different people.
So we're going to track, even if it's uncomfortable, the, the number of kids who are unable to go to Oakton, the number of kids who are unable to get the Workforce Initiative Act?
We are, we're already looking at those youth. They concern us all. What we're also saying is that at the very beginning, to avert that into the future, is to begin to take them while they're younger, to look at those predisposition variables that are inherent in each one of them, begin to help steer them in the right direction, make sure they're parenting right, encourage parents to be parents, to provide a better village and a path in which, at a later date, those same kindred youth may not go that, go down that path. But yes, we have to start by looking at those we have right before us, and it's because those we have before us that all of us have come together with an agreement, that we have to embrace this differently. No one is encouraged to come to Friday morning meetings. No one has been, been made to feel that if you don't show up, something's wrong. These have been professionals in this city of all levels of walk and ilk who have come to this session, because innately they believe that we can do better, and there's something that we can do to, to lock arms with each other, to be a better safety net for all of the youth and the children in our community.
Okay, I just want to be sure the data can, has facts in it that relate to the kids that we're working with now, because I feel very strongly that those kids need to be represented. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree that, that any honest and candid accounting of, of where the need is and what the assessment would be would have to include everybody, including the, the youth that the city serves in those essential programs. The, the interesting thing about collective impact, and maybe you can help fill in some of the gaps in our understanding about what collective impact is and what it is not, it's interesting that my perception is that it is different than coordination or collaboration. It's something at a much, much higher level or a much deeper intensity of community engagement, and that it has had, there's success, there's precedent for a collective impact initiative. The Strive in Cincinnati and these other initiatives in Illinois that have actually had an impact, they've measured the success, they're heading in the right direction, and it's different than what came before it, which was siloed agencies or disparate impact or, and maybe you can help us understand why collective impact is the model that you feel is going to be successful here.
Sure. So just to distinguish it with an example that involves Y O U and the YMCA. Right now, we collaborate. For example, we are sending a large group of our kids to Camp Echo this summer so that they have that rich experience. We don't, though, have a shared set of metrics for what we're both trying to achieve for a child who is in fifth grade going into sixth grade, which is a big part of the cohort that we're sending to Camp Echo. If suddenly we say, here are the three goals that we share, and then we're now talking about those the same way in both places, and we're now integrating those the same way in both places, that's a different experience for the child than just going to both things. Going to both things is great, and that's collaboration, we're making that happen. If we're communicating the same message, communicating the same values, engaging parents with the same strategies, and that won't happen overnight, because we both have our deep kind of organizational cultures, and Camp Echo is its own universe, and ours is our own universe, but over time, by being part of these design teams and having everyone at the table... at the table, everyone's taking back, what can we do at Echo, what can we do in after school? And suddenly, that child doesn't feel like they're being passed off between two great experiences. They feel like they're in one coherent experience toward their development as a person. I, I don't know if that analogy makes sense, but that's, that's a different level of impact than just us doing things together. It's us intending on an outcome for children together. And that intentionality has consequences for children, because kids feel intention, and they know when they're in a space that has a purpose, and they know when those purposes align and when they don't align. And when multiple trusting sources are telling you something, that is a different experience. At least, that's what they found in these other places. Is that?
So, so it's not only the infrastructure that Alderman Wilson just used to describe this, but also in increasing the density of the relationships, the human relationships among and between the organizations for all those individuals?
And I'm going to add. Alderman Grover and everyone, excuse me, I'd like to remind you, it's nine o'clock at night, and we have a long, long agenda. This is going to go to a committee at some point before we, is it not City Manager, before we bring it back?
There, there is no action. This was just meant to be a presentation and really to get a sense from the council. So I think the council needs to decide based on your discussions this evening. If you wish to discuss this further, then I would recommend you send this to committee. Then I think the, the issues of funding and other next steps would need to be discussed there.
So here.
I move that we send it to the committee then.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to add that.
Which, which committee?
Which committee?
Which committee with Human Services?
Okay.
I think it's up to the council. A lot of different parts of the city are touched by this. I think you could send it to Administration of Public Works, you could send it to Human Services.
Administration and Public Works meets more often than Human Services.
Human Services meets once a month. I think that's.
You want that to go there? All right.
To me, that's the key.
It can devote more intense time to it, but I'd like to.
Alderman Wilson, did you want it to go to Human Services then?
Sure. I move that, and just to, I just want to add that I am in sync with what you're suggesting. So I understand it, and I think this is a, this is a good plan. But I move that we send this to Human Services for further consideration. I'll second.
Can we discuss the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey.
I think it is too soon to send it to a standing committee of the City Council. I think more information needs to be provided and more explanation needs to be provided. I'm, I mean, we can talk among ourselves about something that not all of us, I mean, I know Alderman Grover and Alderman Wilson understand this completely, but I sure don't. And I just think that the organizations that are bringing this to us need to make it more clear. And also, one of, one of the issues that we didn't talk about tonight, which you raised, Madam Mayor, is what responsibility does District 65 and 202 take for the fact that we are paying, in terms of 65, over $10,000 per student, I think, for an annual individual education, and around $16,000 per student for the high school? What responsibility do they take for turning out students who, who can't fill out forms, who can't pass remedial testing at, at Oakton Community College? You know, do we just sit back and say, well, there are some kids who just aren't going to make it? It seems to be a growing number who, who fall into the category that you're talking about. And I just, you know, how, you know, we've passed them on from grade school to high school. Now, now there are all these organizations that deal with them, and now we're saying we need another level in order to make sure that they can meet the standards that you feel they should meet. I, I just think we're, I am nowhere on this. And I'm a pretty nice person.
Yes, you are.
I mean, I want to help people. I, I support giving money to everybody. I just don't get this.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
I'll be brief. And it's really actually, it's more of a comment than, than a question. And I want, I want to revisit a comment that Alderman Wynn made regarding City Council involvement. And I would argue that the City Council, by how we allocate, allocate internal resources, how we initiate and continue programs, and how we provide funding for not-for-profits is really the essence of the Cradle to Career. We've been doing it for decades. It's exactly what we do. And that the council, and the reason why I asked initially, where was the elected official piece of it? This is the biggest funding source in the city for programs. And it's important to have the City Council, the city government, as an active participant, not merely a funder. And I really want to make that huge distinction, and I think it's the way that many private foundations are going, community foundations, is not, I'm going to write a check, go forth. We have amazing expertise here, what we do in every aspect of budget allocation and how we make decisions. It's about taking people from the moment they're born until, you know, senior services. So we're doing it every day. And the other piece is data gathering. We have robust data sets. Our community development office, the data sets we're talking about, you were mentioning, we have so much of that already. So this first year of gathering data, I would, you know, argue again that we have a lot of that data already in place. And so that initial funding of paying for someone to collect that, it might not be as, as onerous as, as you may think.
Thank you. There's a motion before us to send this to Human Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, now that we've finished with item one, we can move on. I've asked the, I've asked the capital improvement team to go home, so we'll do that report another evening. But I think it's important, certainly, for the, the balance of the agenda. Next, I'd like to ask Catherine Hurley, our Sustainable Programs Coordinator, to come up. As you heard from some of the public speakers, we have been working on a, a project with our community partners on the next steps from the Climate Action Plan, and Catherine is here to report on those efforts.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Bob Woods. So happy to be here, Catherine Hurley, Sustainable Programs Coordinator. I'm happy to be giving you an update this evening on the Evanston Climate Action Plan, how we did on our first plan and our first goal, as well as an exciting new recommendation for a next plan. So as you may recall, Evanston was one of the signatories of the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement, and Evanston was, was one of the first communities, really, that developed a climate action plan in response to signing the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement. And in 2008, the city set forth a goal of 13% reduction in emissions by 2012. And this plan and goal was developed as part of a year-long process with over 130 members of the community and city staff, and sort of an all-hands-on-deck process. And it established over 220 different strategies for how the community could reach this 13% reduction goal. As was mentioned previously by some of the speakers, and I thank you all of our, members of our environmental community who have stayed late this evening to hear the presentation. But it truly was a good model of city and community collaboration, and the goal that was put forth and the plan was really, in, in large part, developed by the community. So the plan was adopted in 2008, and the Office of Sustainability was created, and in partnership, the city and the entire community has been working to implement the So over these past four years, a lot of work has been done by both community members, our large employers, and the city. And I'm happy to announce that Evanston has achieved its climate action goal of 13% below 2005 levels in 2012. Just real quickly, talking about data, this graph shows you a bar graph of the emissions. The red is the community emissions, and the blue is the City of Evanston operational emissions. And by the end of 2012, the city as a whole community has gone below that red line, so to speak, of what the goal was for our climate action plan. And it is important to note that the city's operational emissions are only 4%, so they're that little blue slice. However, the city, as the initiator of this community-wide goal and challenge, so to speak, has been a leader in reducing our own emissions. And in fact, the city's reduction percentage was 32% over this timeframe. So a really significant amount of emissions from the city's own operations. So how did Evanston achieve this very bold and ambitious goal? In your, on your chairs and in the packet was a copy of our Climate Action Plan Update Report, which compiles all the information from the four-year horizon, that was the projects, the programs, the collaborations to achieve the goal. But some of the highlights, if we had to really boil them down, first and foremost, smart policies that Evanston established to help be a green building destination and hub. Whether it be the Walgreens Net Zero Store, which is specifically located here because Evanston has a strong ethic for green buildings and efficiency, or the individual smaller residential or commercial buildings which chose to be greener by design because the developers and the community felt that it was important to make our buildings more efficient than they otherwise would have been. The overall biggest reduction in our emissions did come from our electricity aggregation program and our 100% green energy contract. But there was also some wonderful local renewable energy development made. And on this slide, the second picture shows the 25 KW solar PV array that's at our water treatment plant. So again, Evanston leading by example. The Evan, the city was able to do this project in large part by funding from the federal government and from our state. So we were able to do this at a very low impact to the taxpayers. In addition, transportation is also a really large source of emissions, and so Evanston has really built a strong culture and infrastructure around green transportation and lower emission forms of transportation. Whether it be our protected bike lanes or our enhanced bicycle racks, or promotions of open streets events, such as Bike the Ridge, and others promoting public transit, Evanston is truly a place where you can get around town without having a car and where there are sidewalks that connect you everywhere from downtown to business districts to your home. And so that strong culture has really helped people to continue to get out of their cars and be able to get around without reduce, having emissions. And then finally, this goal would not have been accomplished without wonderful, strong community partnerships and relationships, whether it be our grassroots environmental groups that are here this evening, or our large employers, and everyone in between engaging the community in the small projects and the really big initiatives. That's how Evanston was able to accomplish this goal. So it really was an all-hands-on-deck, all-working-together. We're so happy for all the accomplishments we've, we've made, but we also sometimes wonder, how do we compare when we look outside Evanston? It's really great that there are wonderful accomplishments, and we're setting our own goals, but on a national perspective, how do we match up? So in order to help fulfill our making the most livable city in America, Evanston was one of the early adopters of the STAR Community Rating System, which is a new rating system helping to evaluate communities at the highest possible level, the whole community, and looking not only at the environmental components, but also those, those social and economic components as well. So the STAR Communities Rating System looks at things from economic development to education, arts, and culture, as well as natural systems, climate and environment, and water, et cetera. LEED today is the, the gold standard for buildings, and STAR Communities is going to become the gold standard for communities. Today, over 70 communities representing 33 million people across North America are participating in STAR Communities, and Evanston is an early adopter. And all the great accolades we heard earlier this evening about our Tree City USA and the wonderful work our Public Works Department does, all of these initiatives, even the previous presentation, all those efforts to care about every element of Evanston is what the STAR Communities Rating System is all about. So for those of you who probably already heard, Mayor Sisadell was excited to announce on March 7th at the State of the City that Evanston was certified as a four-star community through the STAR Communities Rating System. Evanston was one of the second communities to be receiving this rating and one of the early adopters in the pilot program. So even though it's really late, I did want to bring the plaque. How, how would you get an award without a plaque, right? So this is the plaque. We'll do photo ops at a later time, but it is really exciting, and a lot of the national media and some of the national funders who helped fund STAR Communities picked up our information. We had a wonderful graphic infographic that our community engagement team put together that showed up on a bunch of the national websites, and it was really exciting. So moving forward, there's going to be lots of opportunity, talking about data, there's ways we can integrate data from this project. It's a three-year horizon. So of course, we'll be mobilizing this summer, staff and community partners to talk about how can we reach that five-star rating, because that's the, the next level, and obviously work on continuous improvement. But in terms of our climate action goal, the STAR Communities Rating System, we were acknowledged for our work in climate action, but all the other work that the community is doing as well was also recognized. That's very exciting. So our, Evanston's initial climate action plan had a planning horizon through 2012, and that was mostly in part to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement called to action. So last year, our citizens and community groups were interested in saying, well, what's next for climate action? We met this goal, but we want to continue to move forward and do more. And we're fortunate to have so many different organizations and community volunteers that we had a convening in the fall of 2012, and over 200 groups and additional individuals, over 50 people from across the community came together to work towards setting common goals. We just heard about common goals in Cradle to Career. This is sort of like the environmental sustainability convening to determine priorities. And the top project that all of our environmental sustainability groups wanted to focus on was the next climate action plan and goal. And this informal network, we had to give it a name so we could refer to it. So Sustain Evanston is an informal name of our environmental sustainability groups in Evanston, and now we meet two to three times per year. There's a website, it's called Evanston Green Buzz, and it's on the bottom of the slide, evanstongreenbuzz.org. So you can see all the groups that are involved. You can join any of the Google groups, so you can hear and learn about their different discussions. And last year, Sustain Evanston created a working group and spent 12 months to develop ideas for our next climate action goal. The plan builds upon the successes and the lessons learned from the previous goal, so we had 220 wonderful ideas. And the group said, this time, let's try to focus on the most impactful areas. We did a lot of the low-hanging fruit. Let's try to hit some of the next important targets. They also identified that, so that energy and transportation were the two most important areas, and that the public education campaign needed to be integral. Everyone, most people now know that Climate Action Plan was an important plan for the community and a first goal, but it doesn't necessarily tell you what we want people to do. So the goal of this group was for the next plan to be more public-facing and have a way to engage the community. So without further ado, I'm pleased, on behalf of all of our organizations that are here tonight, and all of our individuals, and the individuals that are involved in multiple organizations, because we have many, to present to you the Evanston Livability Plan as Evanston's next climate action plan and goal. The plan puts forth a new goal of a 20% reduction in emissions by 2016, which builds upon the 12% that we've already, the 13% we've already achieved. The 20% reduction is also in line with the STAR Communities' goal. STAR Communities frames it as a 80% reduction by 2050. So if you draw a straight line and you bring it down to 2016, that's where you get 20%. We actually did a bottoms-up and a tops-down and came up with 20% as being both a bold and achievable goal. There are five main strategies that are boiling down to those most essential elements, the energy and transportation. So it's residential green power, business green power, building retrofits, transportation change, and then commitments from the city and our other large employers. And the tagline "livability means" was selected because the working group felt that it really spoke to the common goal of a healthy community and focuses on those positive actions that all members of the community would want to and could be able to participate in, even if they didn't know that it was related to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And that's what these buttons come for, "livability means." There are actually ones for all of the abilities. We'd be happy to get any of the other abilities if you prefer a bikeability or a walkability or commutability. So for residential green power, the strategy here is to maintain our 100% green power for residents through our electricity aggregation program. And on behalf of staff and all the residents, we're so happy that three weeks ago, City Council approved our three-year contract with Home Field Energy for 100% green energy, thus putting a firm stamp on one of the first important pieces of our next climate action goal. So that's fantastic. We also do have people that move in to the community or that were with another supplier and roll off. So part of the goal also recommends that we continue to actively work to bring on additional residential customers who are now back with ComEd that could benefit from savings and the green energy. So the goal recommended about 500 customers per year, and I've just spoken with Home Field Energy, and they say there are several thousand new people that should be getting the letter that we should actually be able to join in the program. So we'll continue to do outreach over the three years to make sure that no one is left out. Green business power, there are approximately 900 businesses that are getting green energy for. from electricity aggregation because they're small. But we have lots of other businesses in Evanston that are too big for aggregation, but right now have no program or no program supported by the city. So the second strategy is to help develop and implement a green energy program focusing on those next size of businesses. And during our selection of the aggregation supplier, we asked all the suppliers if they'd be willing to work with us to help promote green energy among businesses. And of course, they said, we'd be happy to help promote green energy to businesses. There are also other suppliers that have green energy programs as well, and so the goal is to try to recruit approximately 400 businesses to also benefit from a cost-competitive price as well as green energy. So the third strategy is building retrofits, and this really focuses on improving the building efficiency through an intensive retrofit program. Energy efficiency retrofits have a significant benefit on the individual property that receives the retrofit. Not only do you feel improved comfortability because you don't have those drafts, you might feel warmer with having your heat less, but it actually also saves significant energy and money. So it's really a win-win proposition. So this strategy focuses on identifying the amount of reduction we need both for residential and commercial properties. So what it will take, retrofits, in order to meet the goal, and we divide up it equally among each of the categories, we would need to reach about 250 homes per year. Now, that's definitely a number that if, when we accomplish it, will be extremely impressive. But we did partnering with Nycor and CNT Energy do a Nycor Challenge, you may recall, about a year ago, and the YWCA benefited from that program. So during that time, we had 191 homeowners and 59 small businesses in three months of an intensive retrofit initiative. So if you extrapolate that out to over the whole year, if we kept that energy up and we had all of our citizen volunteers, we believe that this number could be achieved. And it would really help to improve the overall affordability of homeowners by reducing their monthly bill. That same organization that we worked with on the challenge is extremely interested in helping support Evanston to reach this goal, and Citizens for Greener Evanston, one of our environmental groups, and members of St. Evanston, have signed a strategic partnership with Elevate Energy to really help bring additional resources to the community. We'll need to do some fundraising to help get community organizers out and doing more of those house parties to get people to learn at a one-on-one level about energy efficiency retrofits, but we believe that this is a bold but achievable goal for building retrofits. The fourth recommendation is around transportation change. This focuses both on not only the infrastructure as well as behavior change. Evanston is very lucky to have one of the highest mode splits. And that means people who don't take their car but take public transit, walk, bike to work. So if we can extend that mode split that is going on right now to work, to more trips we make in the community, then this is something that we can definitely achieve by working together. If we put this in real numbers, it would be just over 1,400 miles traveled per year reduced per household. So depending on how many miles you travel, that could either be a lot of miles or not a lot of miles. There are going to be some people who are going to be really embracing this and will do a lot more, and there'll be some people that will just be not able to do as much, and they'll do the best that they can. One of the main important elements of this focus area is trying to remove barriers and enhance our existing transportation options. So there's lots of different efforts, whether it be citizens, city staff underway to help with everything from trying to coordinate our bus systems, trying to make information real-time about when the bus comes available, so that people are able to know when it's going to come and have it be a more predictable way to get around. And then the last element...
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey has a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Catherine.
Yes.
Do you think it would be of interest to the community to highlight some families who have no car in this town? And who have no car, not because they can't afford to have a car, but who purposefully have no car because of the whole issue of being green? I know of several families like that, and the stories you hear about them, it's just amazing. I saw one man rolling two-by-fours down Dodge Avenue on a dolly. He had been to Home Depot. I know this family has no car because I know them. And I mean, people manage.
Yes, they do.
And they're very exciting when they tell you about how they do things.
Yes.
And I would love to, if we could just pinpoint and focus on some of those families, because I think they should be rewarded in some way, at least if nothing else, reputationally.
Absolutely. We, let's talk offline. We could definitely do, if they're comfortable, a feature story on our Green Buzz blog, or just a...
It'd be great.
The Jones family, name has been changed, and this is how they... And I think that showing that ways in which people can reduce their single-vehicle travel around town is helpful, whether it be a family case study, or a particular, if you're in one neighborhood and you're trying to get another part of town, how could you do that without being in your car by yourselves, modeling for other people? Absolutely. And we do have many, many members here. We had a meeting earlier, and we had several people who rode their bikes, even though it was inclement weather, so we can role-model that for each other. Absolutely. And every little bit really counts. So the final strategy for the Evanston Liveability Plan is to focus on the city and other major institutions. So the city, as I mentioned before, has already reduced our emissions by 32%. So a 2% emission reduction per year is probably what we would already be doing with our energy-efficient lighting and reducing our fleet. This is sort of our normal operation of business now, which is wonderful. So the plan recommends working with our other large employers in town and to work with them to actually make a commitment, 2% or something that's reasonable based on their overall emissions, so we can all together be leading in the community and showing other smaller businesses and other entities how the efficiency projects we're doing can make an impact. In addition to the retrofits and fleet efficiencies, the behavior change campaigns and outreach towards employees is also really important. So Bike to Work Week, Car Free Day, those types of things, when you rally people that are all coming to one place of employment and getting them to help participate in choosing carpooling, taking the bus, those are all things that we can do together and, to Alderman Rainey's point, promote better, so we all know, hey, look at how many people at the high school, those bikes are not only students, there's employees that are parking their bikes there, too. I think that would be great to know. So in terms of the next steps for our Evanston Liveability Plan, we're working to create action teams for community engagement, and some of these have already been starting to be formed through the Evanston Green Buzz website and getting regular meetings going. We had a lot of these action teams that were developed out of the first climate action plan, and actually Citizens for Greener Evanston became an organization after the first climate action plan. So we're stronger and more organized than ever, and we'll continue to look for new people who are finding that they're inspired by this new plan. Reaching out to the large employers in the business community will be especially important, but I think with this plan, the group has put forth something that's pretty specific. So the ask is a pretty specific number of items that I think we can work together to get people engaged in. The Liveability Means Campaign, the buttons, evanstonliveability.org is already a website that's up and running and has great tips in each of the different ability ideas, and the plan will be to be out of the city festivals and getting people to be excited about one of the ability areas they could focus on this year. And greenbuzz.org, and evanstonliveability.org to continue to be the hub for online resources, and those are already up, ready to go, and being used. So the Liveability Plan calls for that 20% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, but it builds upon the 13% that we've already accomplished, which most of the communities that signed the U.S. Conference of Mayors, very few of them actually made a plan, and very few of them actually met the goal. So it's tremendous accomplishment, and now's a great opportunity to continue to mark ourselves in the sand and figure out what our next goal is going to be. It's bold, but we believe it's achievable, and all of our organizations here and the list, this is a list of official endorsements of organizations that not only want to see the city adopt the goal, but are willing and ready with volunteers to help promote and be engaged in implementing the plan. So tonight, staff in Sustain Evanston seek City Council's adoption of the Evanston Liveability Plan and its goals, and are really looking forward to hopefully working with everybody to develop our next wonderful accomplishments that hopefully we'll see in just a few years. I'll be happy to take, I think the last slide, just a pretty picture. Any questions or other comments?
Alderman Tandem.
Thank you. What was the time period that we set aside for achieving the initial 13%?
It was a four-year timeframe. And so this one, while we started it, the planning in 2013, the idea was to give it another four-year timeframe and have it end in the 2016 timeframe. Well, a good question came up earlier was, well, let's see, we get a lot more residents. We have all these new apartments, we have new people moving in, we might be more efficient if we might have more people. How are we going to deal with that? And I think the part of the answer is, as we become more sophisticated of how we measure our emissions, we'll be updating how we communicate and measure success. We're one of the few communities that is in a phase two of climate action plan.
I'd just like to say, I strongly support retrofitting residences to the point that you made about really benefiting the bottom line for homeowners' expenses. That seems to me like we can accomplish more than just efficiency of energy, but really help people who are struggling to make ends meet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to Catherine and to all the individuals and organizations and for the commitment that makes this such a success. And how proud to hear the Public Works reports and your reports tonight makes you really feel good about living in this town. I mean, it's very, very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Catherine. Some low-hanging fruit would seem to be school-related travel, and I think that school-related traffic accounts for not only a lot of carbon consumption, but congestion as well. And I'd be interested to know if we could do some data gathering on the number of Evanston students who drive as a percentage or are driven to school, not including those who ride school buses, and really focus a lot of effort on reducing the number of students who are riding cars. And see if the high school can work out an incentive program to discourage filling up their parking lot with student-related parking, and work with District 65 about getting more students to walk and ride their bikes to school. We have the infrastructure, we just don't seem to have the culture yet, the school culture that would support that.
Absolutely. And one of our transportation teams just getting going is, we have a resident who's very excited about the walking school bus idea, and has done a lot of research in the last couple of weeks, and he's going to be doing a presentation to the Council of PTAs this next coming week to try to enlist them to get excited about the walking school bus idea, where even if you can't walk your child necessarily by themselves to school, can you work together with people on your block or along a route, and all work together to have the right number of adults walk the children to school in a walking school bus? So we'll report back as soon as we find out.
And even some ETHS students who don't yet have their driver's licenses report to me that they would call for rides less often if the CTA buses that run along Dodge were more reliable and more frequent, and perhaps even included a stop behind the school. So instead of just a Dodge and church, if the CTA could actually include the school campus in its routing and be more visible presence on campus, we might get more of those non-licensed ETHS students to use public transportation rather than rely on cars.
It's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for the wonderful presentation. Just like many of the other Alderman, I take a lot of pride in the awards that we receive, particularly in sustainability. I think that, as we all understand, that it has economic impacts both to families and also for families. And I think one of the challenges that will, I'd love to see us tackle, is the city of Evanston, is how we do more outreach to a broader community, particularly Black families, Hispanics families, et cetera. And we'll be able to see their names in terms of members of the groups.
Absolutely.
Not to say that, you know, you're not impacting them, but to put some kind of emphasis.
Absolutely.
So thank you again.
Thank you. You've done a terrific job.
Thank you.
So Madam Mayor, members of the council are asking, the item on the agenda this evening is to approve the plan as presented.
Is that good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, before we move on to the next item, I really want to commend Catherine Hurley. She, we heard one model this evening with the cradle-to-career that was very staff-driven dollars. This has been largely volunteer-driven, and what Catherine has been able to do is to bring together all of the sustainability, environmental groups in Evanston and have them all work together. So the energy is that of the volunteers, of the people in the community who care about these issues. Catherine's skill and ability has been to coordinate, facilitate, convene, but really all this has been done through volunteer efforts. And so I want to thank Catherine for her skill in that, and I want to thank all the organizations represented here this evening. This is your plan, this is your effort, and I think really this is the model, hopefully, that the City Council put in place in 2008. And here we are, a number of years later, and it has worked exactly as the council had hoped it would. So thank you to the groups, and thank you, Catherine, for your excellent work. We'd like to move on now, Madam Mayor, members of the council to SP3. As you know, the city of Chicago has recently adopted an ordinance that tackles issues regarding disposable plastic shopping bags. Staff felt it was an important time to review that ordinance. We have taken it to a variety of our different citizen groups within the city. I think the Environment Board, Catherine, has looked at this. I think the Utilities Commission has looked at this. So we wanted to come this evening and talk a little bit about this. We think that it's appropriate to have a larger community dialogue on the subject. We're asking that staff be directed to have a community meeting to talk about the Chicago ordinance, to get community feedback, and then to come back to the council through the Administration of Public Works Committee in the not-too-distant future to talk further. So in the interest of time, we have a short presentation which really would outline Chicago's approach, which is really a two-pronged approach in a first year, starting in 2015, requiring those largest national chains to switch to the elimination of the plastic bags, and then a year later, more regional change. That is the extent of the proposal from the city of Chicago. It's not something that would change for eliminate plastic bags in every business, but with just in those two categories over several years' time. So our recommendation this evening is to continue to have a community dialogue on this issue, perhaps get some improvements from the community on the Chicago ordinance, and then come back to you and with a draft ordinance for Evanston for your consideration in the next few weeks.
What's your definition of community? For this community meeting, are businesses going to be invited?
Absolutely. We've been in touch with the Evanston Chamber of Commerce. They're actively interested. We'll work with our Economic Development Division to make sure they're specifically invited. We'll use E-News, which has over 30,000 subscribers, to get the word out, and we're proposing to do this in two weeks' time. I think it's the 5th of June at the Ecology Center? At the Ecology Center.
Alderman Rainey.
Based on the Chicago ordinance, the proposed ordinance, Catherine, could you provide us with information about those grocers in Evanston that already restrict the use of plastic bags? For example, Aldi's does not provide any kind of bag for you. You have to bring your own. Sam's, no bags, you've got to use a carton or whatever. And there are several other, Trader Joe, I think, gives you a discount. I know Target now gives you a discount if you don't use their bags. So that would be really helpful, because that would eliminate a lot of the, you know, breastfeeding about how horrible thing this is, because we almost already have it.
Yes, Alderman Rainey and Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. One of the intentions, and the first slide I just wanted to show is a little bit of a refresher on where we've been, and one of the intentions of the community meeting will be to update all the tables that we developed previously on what the main grocers in larger retail stores in Evanston are already doing, in addition to what ones are already taking some proactive or limiting action, also just all the retailers that we think could be impacted if we did an ordinance similar to Chicago, so we have a better understanding of what those businesses may be. But the kind of first main meeting that we talked about this was back in April of 2011, like a little while ago now. So there were some discussions at AMPW there. Staff at that time was directed to hold the community meeting that we had up in the Paris Hall Room here in May, had lots of feedback, came before AMPW again in June, and were asked to bring the topic to the Evanston Environment Board. And we had it in the Environment Board for several months and presented last time we talked about this was at full council on October 24th. And so all the work that had been done previously, one of the goals would be to refresh those numbers and data, because things have changed, and we have other new businesses in town and all those kinds of things. So to your point, Alderman Rainey, we'd absolutely do that as well. So real quick, the overview of the Chicago ordinance. It's been a little confusing in the media, and so that's why I made sure to put it in your packet, because it wasn't available for a while. But it was approved on April 30th. It applies to retail establishments that can sell either perishable or non-perishable goods, so it could be a clothing store, it's not only groceries, but it does not apply to any dine-in or carry-out restaurants. to any dine-in or carryout restaurants. And it only applies to chain stores. The Chicago ordinance defines that as a store that has owned, the same owners own three or more stores, or any franchise store. So, right now, I have an intern compiling a list of the number of establishments in Evanston, which we think this would impact. The list, obviously, less than lists in Chicago, but definitely a different scope than when we talked about this the last time. So, chain or franchise only, and no restaurants, whether it be dine-in or carryout. So, it would really be the larger, more co-owned stores. And then, as the city manager mentioned, the implementation in the Chicago ordinance is two-phase. Effective August 1st, 2015, it would be establishments 10,000 square feet or greater. And then, Phase Two would be less than 10,000 square feet. So, right now, we're going to be compiling a table that will hopefully identify to the best of our ability every store in Evanston which meets both of these requirements, whether it's above or below 10,000 square feet, and whether or not they have any existing incentive programs, or whether they don't have plastic bags at all. One thing that, there's a slight reference in the Chicago ordinance, and I can get more information if people are interested, but they did, two years ago, when we discussed this, they actually passed a recycling requirement in Chicago. And it was similar to some of the discussions we had about recycling. But unfortunately, they never implemented it. So, they had a pretty, well, you know, certain stores over a certain square footage need to have a bin to collect plastic film by the front door. And they were then supposed to report either quarterly or yearly about how much plastic film and bags they collected. And the whole idea was to get a better baseline of how much plastic bag and film was being collected. And unfortunately, right around the time that the Department of Environment, when the new administration came in and was sort of decentralized, the main city department that was responsible for implementing it was no longer. So, there's this language that was out on the books, but that was never implemented. So, there's a little reference to it in the ordinance. But this is basically the Chicago ordinance. And then, finally, as the city manager mentioned, once the Chicago ordinance was even up for discussion, you know, I started hearing some conversations and then started having, I think many of you received the different media calls. So, having a community meeting, and we can reach out to anyone and everyone that wants to come, it'd be great if we filled the Ecology Center so much that we had to have a second meeting to get feedback and see where people are at. It's been two years.
Catherine, I'm sorry, we have two Aldermen with questions. Alderman, win.
Yes, thank you, Catherine. I think this will be excellent. One of the things, I don't know whether it's possible to gather this data or not, I think there was something in here about what happened in Ireland. But, no, I think the overall goal eventually is that we all bring our own bags, and we all bring reusable bags. And it's not that we all switch to paper, which, you know, there's all this debate on the Internet about whether that is environmentally better than plastic or not. But I think the overarching goal would be to switch to a reusable bag. And is it possible to find out in the cities where this is a plastic bag tax or a ban has been implemented for a number of years, whether we could figure out what the paper bag usage has happened to it, to see whether people are switching over?
Absolutely, yes. In California, the West Coast, there's a lot of programs. And so, I'd be happy to pick some of the ones that have been established for a longer period of time and do outreach and try to get some more specific, better than just what is on the Internet, so that we can have some more definitive answers.
Yeah. I actually was in Ireland a couple of years ago, and we didn't have a bag to buy groceries with. So, we actually had to buy one, because they didn't have anything available for us to carry out from the store. So, I mean, they didn't even have paper bags at that point. So, it must have been fairly effective into switching people over entirely.
Yeah, I can, we can absolutely get that information.
Because I think, you know, that really mitigates the issue of paper or plastic.
Right.
Because are we really moving people off entirely to reusable?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Catherine. Yeah, one of the things that I'd like to know, and I'd like it to be part of your presentation, is what sort of recycling efforts are now being undertaken in the city. My understanding is that Jewel, for the most part, does have recycling bins available. I think, if I'm remembering the last conversation we had on this, Evanston is doing a very good job in having people bring their plastic bags back. So, what sort of participation are we seeing? I think that data is out there. I mean, compared to Chicago, we must be head and shoulders above Chicago. Let me think. I had a couple of more questions for you. At the Ecology Center, the parking lot is pretty small. That's why the parasol room worked really well before. So, maybe we could, I mean, hopefully, there will be another meeting, and people will be participating in that. I am concerned about some issues that Ms. Esther brought up. And that is how some of these, some of these things that we're excited to implement do affect people who are walking and are carrying their groceries, and who may not have a bag with them, and how they get home. Not everybody goes to Aldi's or Sam's Club and gets great quantities of food. And, okay, why would I say that?
Absolutely.
But anyway, how we can accommodate that. I also would like to know what we can do to encourage our trash providers to include recycling of plastic bags. I mean, I know in my business, which will not be affected by this, but that people always think about whether or not to take a plastic bag or to request a plastic bag. They're always very thoughtful. We recycle them for them. So, it's, that's, a lot of it has to do with the intent of the community, the desire of the community to be more responsible. And I think Evanston does, is extremely responsible in that regard. I just don't want to negatively affect some people who may need access to these bags.
Yeah. Thank you. Now is a great time. Director Robinson and I are starting to brainstorming about the solid waste franchise that will be coming up next year. And so, some of the things that would be maybe cost prohibitive or not attract a competitive kind of process if you were doing it outside of that, or really small, if we were to think really big picture, what are all the different things? There's other streams of material that we'd love to keep out of the landfill, that we can't tell people that they can't buy clothes anymore. So, how do we help people to find a proper home for a garment that, if it can't be donated and absolutely can't be reused, can it be turned into, you know, rags or cleaning materials? So, we can look at the plastic film and the wider context of all the materials that we're trying to divert. So, the timing is great. And yeah, absolutely. We'll be looking at that.
Thank you. Alderman Grover. The list of counties and cities that have, since we started our discussion two years ago, have now enacted ban bag, bag bans or tax or a fee is really quite impressive. There aren't as many Midwestern cities as I thought there would be, but it doesn't surprise me at the same time that it's kind of focused on the coasts and those coastal communities, where they see a lot of the bags in the water. I'm 100% supportive of doing a bad bag ban, once I get my tongue wrapped around it and can actually say it, in Evanston. And I think Chicago's initiative makes it much easier for us to do it, because we won't be the standalone as we would have been two years ago. So, with the momentum from Chicago, I think it's a really good idea for us to seriously consider, and I hope pass, a bag ban, and maybe start a more regional effort, if it's both Chicago and Evanston, big consumers of bags, and start changing the consumption culture. Thank you. There are several more Aldermen with lights on. I'd like to remind you all it's quarter of 10, and we have a couple more agenda items. And this is only for discussion. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm a shopper at Aldi's at least twice a week. And I just think that we need to give people more credit. At Aldi's are people of every single ethnic group, of every age, people on walkers, people with three kids. You have to not only, you not only have bags provided for you there, but you have to pay for a wagon, for, to use a wagon. You check it out with a quarter, and you return it with a quarter, because that reduces the labor costs of people going out and gathering up all these wagons. It also reduces the cost of the groceries by not providing bags. And it is just amazing how smart poor people, Black people, old people, young people are. They know, when they go there, if they're on their way home and they forgot a bag, they know that they can just stuff those items in their arms and carry them out. They can, they can remember to bring a bag. It's just amazing. I think that because some people don't have a car, some people use the bus, some people are old, some people are poor, does not mean they cannot be thoughtful of the environment. And I guarantee you, they're very smart, and they will be thoughtful. And even people on walkers can hook their little cloth bag on the walker. It's amazing. We are just always making excuses for people we don't know that well. And there's no need for it.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Alderman Rainey. I shared this before, and I congratulated you for the wonderful leadership that you provided in the efforts. I've also said I take a lot of pride in our awards. And then, the last thing that I said was I talked about the economic impact that it has in a positive way and a negative way sometimes. And I think Ms. Esther said it best. And I guess where I want to leave you, or with a suggestion, that's to be more inclusive. And the two groups that I would encourage you to have this conversation with, first, there's a group of foster Black seniors that meet at Foster Center every, what day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
Oh, they're fun. They rock.
When is it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Those are the sharpest, most, I mean, spirited, Black seniors, and I want to make sure that I say that carefully, that are in Evanston. And they represent a large number of the population. And I'll tell you that I remember, I think I was only on council for a month when I met with that group, and this issue was on the top of their list. And I wasn't prepared to have that conversation. And so, I am now. And I'm just sharing with you that if you can get on that agenda and have that conversation, I think it will be very eye-opening to you, for one. As well, it includes that population that I was just talking about on the other list. My other concern that I have is, and I think the chamber does a wonderful job, but I've also been very critical of the chamber in terms of their representation and penetration on the west side of Evanston. And a couple of stores that I'm concerned with, and Alderman Rainey, you're right, the folks who go to Aldi's, they do an excellent job recycling, recycling their bags, but they have to get them from somewhere in town. And so, part of my concern, especially because we are trying to land a store in the Evanston Plaza, is the impact that this could potentially have on a new grocer. You know, we've already had a few preliminary conversations, and I don't think that any potential grocers is factoring in that 5% grocery bag tax on their expense side.
There's no tax.
Oh, there's no tax. Okay. Did I not? Okay. But again, okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So, that's, so that's my question. Again, I just want to, there's Sam's Club, Alderman Rainey mentioned, but there's food for less. And then, there's also, of course, our potential. So, I hope that you can do a little bit more outreach to those folks. And we have two meetings, they, both groups. There's West Evanston Business Association, and you can follow up with Megan Jones on that.
Absolutely. Just kind of make appointment on the chamber. The Chamber of Commerce did do a survey, if you might recall, last time, around the conversation. So, I've already been in contact with them to get a copy of what the survey questions were and what the results were, because I think that would inform conversations, have, understand what the feeling was at that time, and have continued conversations, make sure they're invited to the meeting, and have additional one-on-one meetings with them, if there's interest as well. So, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you. You know, I wasn't fully behind this a couple of years ago when we discussed it, but I think the time is right now that we move on this, or, you know, continue the discussion with community input and really, you know, come to some decision about this. I'm a big user of plastic bags, repurposing for picking up after my dogs. That's, that's an issue that I think I have to be able to deal with in terms of maybe finding degradable bags and pursuing the availability of those bags. You know, with regard to plastic bags or reusable bags, I think, you know, there are inexpensive plastic bags that can be reused time and time again. Plus, I think some of the ones that are, they feel like cloth.
The nonwoven.
They cannot be that expensive to have available to members in the community. I think that's, I think that's the least we could do. And the side effects would be significant. We'd reduce garbage and litter. It would go a long way to really making our city better-looking and cleaner. So, I don't, I think there are a lot of solutions in between banning completely and, you know, not having something that people are accustomed to using. So, I think, you know, the other thing, I think, plastic bags, when carried, especially the disposable ones, are very unhealthy in terms of circulation in your hands. I think there are better ways of transporting your goods. So, I do support this, and hopefully, I look forward to further discussion.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Well, Alderman Tendem touched on what I was going to say, and that's simply that I think a part of the plan is that we, as a city, should develop a disposable, a bag, a cloth bag, that we can give as an incentive to residents if we're going to do this. I think that we need to do that as a goodwill gesture, if nothing else.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion and wanting to move this along, and Alderman Rainey stopped me.
I'll be glad to share some of my Rainey for Alderman. Everybody has one.
All right. We've solved that problem. Thank you very much, Catherine. And go ahead and have your community discussion, and then we'll bring you back here, and we'll all talk.
Thank you so much.
Moving right along, city manager.
Yes, we'll do SP4 another evening. SP5, in your packet, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in your packet, is a first-quarter budget report. Mr. Lyons is at the Government Finance Officers Association's National Meeting in Minneapolis. He left a lovely PowerPoint. However, in interest of time, I think I can summarize pretty briefly that with one quarter of the year done, we're a little over on revenue, a little under on expenditures. All of our trends are positive. We've talked about the snow issue. I think that's probably the single greatest fiscal concern we'll have to deal with during the course of 2014, is making sure we can make up the overages with snow. I think we're confident at this point we can. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we just need to make a motion to accept the report?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept the report.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Alderman Holmes. Next is the approval of Lovelace Park Soccer Foundation Grant Letter of Interest.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members--
I'm sure everyone's for that.
We'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Megan, move.
Alderman Rainey.
I move that we support it.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to support the request for a grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And then, finally, Madam Mayor, under appointments, there are three appointments to the Board of Animal Control and one appointment to the Minority Women in Evanston Business Enterprise Development Committee.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I support, I mean, I move, I also support, I move approval of your appointments to Animal Control, Jill Cabot, Meredith Reeves, Rives, Diane Valetta, and to the MWEBE Development Committee, Paul Mark Wallace.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn? No, we need call of the wards.
And no executive session.
Alderman Wilson, thank you very much. Alderman Holmes.
I just would like to remind council, and I'm not sure who has, I think Alderman Grover has it, but could everyone, please, make sure you pick up and review the Inequality for All film that we do have, so that I think we can have a better understanding, even some of our career to cradle, cradle to career as well.
I have not seen it. I get it from Alderman Grover, or is it at the library? Do they have?
Well, they have a copy, but we have our own copy.
Okay. I don't have Netflix. Thank you, though. I'm sorry. Alderman Holmes, you're done? Alderman Tendem?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I do have a report. In this very large packet that we got on our desk tonight were three items of great concern to me. One was the cancellation of an event that-- One was the cancellation of an event that took place last Sunday, that we're just now being told. So if you planned to go to that, you would have gone and not known it was canceled. Second of all, is a notice, a letter dated April 22nd, from the Police and Fire Foundation regarding a golf tournament the first week of June. And I mean, has that been sitting around, just waiting to be put in an envelope to send us? I've been City Hall maybe two or three times in the last week. It should have been given to me. Thirdly, a report, an invitation to meet the new school superintendent at District 202, which we could have gone, 65, I'm sorry, which we could have gone to because it started at 6:00 tonight, and our meeting didn't start till 7:00, but I didn't open the invitation until after 7:00. So that was pretty impossible. And I don't have kids in school, I don't keep up with these things, and this obviously was the first invitation. So that's one complaint, or three complaints. The other complaint I have, and I just love Call of the Wards when I can complain, because I don't ever get to complain much, is the Northwestern Big White Bus. It seems that no matter what time, I am heading north on Ridge Avenue. The bus is turning north off of Emerson onto Ridge, causing, first of all, that bus is so large, it cannot make that turn in one swoop. And especially if there are cars heading south on Ridge Avenue. There are cars backed up going north, and there are cars backed up going south, and it is too big a bus to be making that turn on Ridge when there is any traffic at all. Maybe at midnight, it can just, you know, go over into the southbound lane with no problem. But it is, every single time I'm coming down Ridge, that happens. I think we need to talk to the school about either getting a smaller bus or a new route. It's bad, talk about the environment, the emissions, it's terrible. And I respectfully request that our City Manager, our Mayor, or somebody does something about it.
Thank you. We will look into it. Alderman Burris.
I'm so delighted that the City Council's reconsidering the plastic bag ban that we brought forth three years ago, and I'm just, I'm actually amazed that many of you are considering it now. So thank you. That's remarkable, the change in attitude. Fantastic.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Thank you, Alderman, win. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favors?
Aye.
The ayes have it.